What else tonight? Good evening, welcome to the Monday, May 8th City Council meeting. I call this meeting to order at 7:01. It's great to see so many people in the audience and for the past, I don't know, year and a half, I have been opening up the council meeting with a moment of mindfulness to start our meeting. And for those who have not had, have not gone through this yet, I invite you to participate. But if you don't want to participate, that's fine, you can just gaze downward or sit quietly during this exercise. So I'm going to ask you to start relaxing in your chair and becoming aware of how you are breathing right now. And notice how you are sitting. And find a way to be relaxed and more alert. And bring attention to your breath. And we're going to start taking some deeper, slower breaths. And you can inhale counting to four and then exhale counting to five. We will take our first inhale. Continue to sit there and be aware of your breath and inhaling and exhaling. And give yourself permission to let go of your day, your Monday, whether you had a busy Monday, the Monday blues. I want to welcome you to our shared community meeting space. This is really about coming more present and focused and coming together as a Ferndale And I'm always grateful that you have come to express your support for our department or for people who serve our community. I'm here to share something that's on your mind, we welcome you. And I also remind you that your elected officials up here are residents and neighbors first. We are your neighbors. We have full-time jobs on top of this job. And we are all here, just like you, to better our community. Let's give one last deep breath. And exhale. I hear it crowd, I hear it. So let's be curious and thoughtful, wish the person next to you well today and be compassionate and open as we discuss important city business. Thank you for being here. Let's rise to say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, we have our Assistant to the City Manager, Danizia, serving as our City Clerk. So Madam Clerk, will you do roll call please? James?
Present.
Leaks May?
Here.
McColsky?
Here.
Polika?
Here.
Piana? Here. Next up is the approval of the agenda. I move to approve the agenda as published. Word. Moved by James and supported by McColsky. McColsky?
Yes.
Polika?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And we have three, we're moving on to presentations and we have three presentations tonight and they're all pretty exciting. And so the first one is 4A, is Introduction of Our New Public Works Water Supervisor. So Dan, come on down to introduce our new team member on Team Ferndale.
Yes, so good evening tonight, Mayor and Council. I am very happy to introduce our new water supervisor. It's been a long time coming from Dan Harper's retirement, which was in August, but good things come to those that wait. So we were able to offer, and Eugene Anderson here has been with us since the beginning of April, he comes to us with 32 years of water and sewer experience and his certifications with the state of Michigan. So we are very happy to have him on the team. I know I am very happy to have him on the team so he can get the water main phone calls at night instead of me. So I'm looking forward to that, so I'm glad everyone came out for that tonight. This is Eugene Anderson, so he'll be taking over managing everything on the water sewer side of things. So we're very happy to have him on the team and looking forward to getting him acclimated to the city of Ferndale.
Welcome Eugene, thanks for being here.
Hey, good evening everyone, just glad to be, certainly glad to be here, city of Ferndale, I look forward to the evening calls and the water calls. I've been doing it for 32 years, so again, I'm glad to be in the city of, excuse me, I said Southfield, I've been in four cities over 32 years. I am happy to be a member of the city of Ferndale. Thank you for the opportunity to serve this community.
I am just so excited, we have your years of experience working in cities, so I welcome all of your experiences from Southfield and everywhere else to bear onto our Ferndale community, so thank you.
Thank you ma'am, glad to be aboard, thank you.
All right, next up on our presentations is 4B, which is Presentation of Life Saving Awards. Welcome Chief.
Thank you, so this is an awesome part of my job, and I will tell you, the men and women that work for Ferndale Fire Department, Ferndale Police Department, including the dispatchers, are amazing people. I stand here with great pride to not only be the fire chief, but a citizen of this community. And the thing about these awards tonight, when I talk to any of these men and women, they're like, what did I do, what call? Because for them, it's just doing their job, it's just another day. They don't expect recognition, they don't expect any of this. But I think it's really important sometimes to pause, because even though it's just another day for us, sometimes those extraordinary things and differences they make need to be recognized. So bear with me, I'm going back to a little bit, it was a little crazy at the end of the year, so I'm catching up. But the beginning of December last year, a call came into dispatch for a patient that fell, just another day, right? Ferndale PD Officer Chris Wisick showed up and realized the individual did not just fall, the individual's in cardiac arrest. He initiated life-saving efforts by performing CPR and ventilations in addition to attaching an AD in preparation for interventions that way. Ferndale Fire Department arrived on scene and noted the patient had no pulse, no only agonal or non-effective respirations. Advanced life support was initiated and provided by the Ferndale Fire Department, Sergeant Mahora, firefighter Stoltz, firefighter Markiabani, and firefighter Petrowski. The Lucas device was placed on the patient to provide CPR compressions, freeing up the personnel to provide other life-saving care. After a few minutes of CPR, the patient began to show signs of life with arm movements and gag reflex to the airway device that was in place. Patient was reassessed and noted to have a pulse at a very slow rate, so the firefighters utilized our cardiac monitor to pace the patient's heart at a rate more adequate to sustain life. With continued control of the patient's heart rate by the cardiac monitor, the patient regained consciousness and was able to speak to the crew caring for him. Pacing of the patient's heart continued until this was able to be provided by hospital staff with their device. The patient received an internal pacemaker at the hospital before being discharged with full function and no deficits from the event. This successful outcome was because of the prompt skilled actions taken by the responders that day. But this time, I would like to recognize those on that call. This is no order, it's just how they're stacked in my pile. Stand in front here. And then Police Officer Chris Wisick, who is not here with us this evening. Can you guys step up there and take a quick picture please?
Thank you so much for your service.
All right, you guys are good? Thank you. So you guys will hear me mention the Lucas device a couple times, those were purchased by the city. We've had seen an increase in lives saved since we put this equipment on our vehicles. So it's an amazing purchase with lives saved as a result by the city. So the second event also happened in December, but it was middle of December, it was kind of a mild December day. So my rescue crew, which is the crew on the ambulance, the senior firefighter came to me and asked if he could take the probationary firefighter outside to do some drills. I said yeah. While they're outside the station doing training alongside the station, they witnessed a car drive into the bike lane, over the curb and crash into the light control box just off of the nine mile intersection by Station 1. They immediately notified dispatch for PD and an engine to be dispatched and grabbed the ambulance to respond. Bystanders had pulled the patient from the car, one of the bystanders happened to be an ER physician. They realized the patient was in cardiac arrest and initiated civilian CPR. The ambulance got over there, realized, confirmed the patient was not breathing and had no pulse. They placed the patient on the cardiac monitor and the patient revealed a systole, which indicates there's absolutely no heart function. Lucas device was placed on this patient to begin CPR compressions while the crew performed other life-saving care. Engine 2 arrived on scene with Lieutenant Burcally and firefighter Staub and supported advanced life support care being provided. A device was placed into the patient's airway to deliver respirations, medication was administered, and electrical activity was then noted on the cardiac monitor. A reassessment of the patient revealed the patient regained a pulse, however, rescue breathing was still necessary. Patient, after arrival at the hospital, was discharged from the hospital to rehab facility. A family member contacted the fire department weeks later stating the patient was doing well, no deficits. This is another example of the impact of quick interventions saving a life. But this time, I'd like to honor all of those involved in that save. Firefighter Evan Chevella. Have to go save another life. Firefighter Justin Petrowski, apparently he likes to be there. You guys step on the stage for a picture please?
Thank you, you three?
At this last incident, I want to recognize is one of those calls that you hope you go through your entire career and never get. A 911 call was placed in the dispatch center for an infant not breathing. Quickly identifying the gravity of the situation, dispatcher Worthen initially dispatched, initiated dispatcher police and fire even before having all the information center in the system, because she knew how important it was for them to get going quickly. Her quick thinking allowed for police to arrive and initiate care, working to clear the baby's airway. Sergeant Toizen and Officer Link put their training into action and made quick decisions starting vital care for this baby in grave distress. Fire Department personnel arrived on scene and confirmed baby had no pulse and no adequate respirations. CPR with ventilations was initiated and after eight rounds of CPR, the baby regained normal skin color, a pulse, and respirations. This was followed by a strong cry, which was a joyous sound to all. Baby continued to improve and route to the hospital, and after short stay was discharged home with family doing well, with no deficits. This call emphasizes the important role of all aspects of the process and play. The professionalism, training, and quick action by the dispatcher, police officers, and fire rescue personnel collectively saved this young life. I'd like to recognize those responsible for this life save. Captain John Schwal. Lieutenant Miles Burcally. Firefighter Mona, Mona Markiabani, if I could talk. Don't give me for that later. And then Sergeant Evan Toizen. Firefighter Michael Cludier. And dispatcher Jessica Worthen. If you guys can step up on the stage for a picture.
Thank you everybody, it takes a village to take care of a village.
And Mayor, we may have a mass exodus, do you mind giving a moment, case family wants to get up?
Not at all, I just appreciate everybody being here.
And thank you everybody for doing such a great job every day.
We do have a public hearing if everybody wants to stay for that, so. All right, with that, we are now going to move on to our third presentation, which is 4C, Introduction of Our New Ferndale Housing Commission Executive Director. is for the introduction of our new Ferndale Housing Commission Executive Director, Emily Vicki. Good to see you, Reggie.
Hello, Mayor.
Good to see you, Emily.
City Council and other esteemed city members. Reggie Sutherland, Vice President of Ferndale Housing Commission here to introduce our newest installation of the Executive Director Ferndale Housing Commission. First, I'd like to say our previous Executive Director, Heather Van Pucker, did an excellent job and we greatly miss her. She was well-liked by the staff, the residents, and by the city. I'm sure that our new Executive Director will do that and greater things. I'd like to thank the city for helping us to field all of the applicants. We had multiple, multiple applicants. We whittled it down to two. At the interview of two, unfortunately, we still had concerns. At that time, there was still another applicant and thankfully, we found what we were looking for. An 18-year veteran employee with the Ferndale Housing Commission who had worked in several positions. She is well-liked, well-knowledgeable of the position. She has filled in the position twice, once as interim before Heather and once after. And on March 23rd, we have hired her and elevated her to the position of the Executive Director. And I'm here to introduce you to Emily Tom.
Thank you, Reggie. That was such a nice introduction. I just want to say thank you very much for having me tonight. It's nice to formally meet the council. Like Reggie mentioned, I've worked for the Ferndale Housing Commission for 18 years. I started when I was a grad student and I got very comfortable and never left. Housing is my passion and I am very excited to continue the great work that our previous Executive Director did and partner with the city to maintain affordable, high-quality housing and hopefully expand our affordable housing stock in the near future. And I look forward to this new adventure. Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to add and own up to that Emily and I actually went to grad school together, but we have never actually worked together at Wayne State Urban Planning. So I look forward to working with you, or at least collaborating with you, more than we have in the past. All right, I'm now moving on to call to audience and we set aside 30 minutes for folks to come up to say whatever on their mind. And we ask you to speak for only three minutes and we have this wonderful large clock to be mindful of that time. And I want to remind folks that we have Discourse with Dignity guidelines and that we really are about a community that values diversity and respect. And we're asking for respectful and courteous behavior during public meetings to support these values and allowing our neighbors across all spectrums and beliefs and viewpoints to share their thoughts and support an environment. And that's what we support as welcoming. Sometimes folks are coming here for the first time and they may feel uncomfortable with public speaking. We hear that a lot up here and we want to make sure their voices are heard. So please remember that abusive language threats, bullying, and personal attacks are discouraged and getting to the root of an issue is hard if the content is buried within disruptive or harmful behavior. So with that, please, your comments should address issues and not people and please address the council, myself, the mayor, because city staff take direction from council. So with that, I invite the first person to have public comment. Welcome.
Good evening, Council. Good evening, Mayor. Joshua Gartner, Ferndale Elks. I'm also representing the Ferndale Memorial Association and I just wanted to speak for a few minutes about the Memorial Day Parade this year. It is all set for Monday, May 29th. We're starting at the same time we usually do, 10 o'clock. The big issue this year is we've had to change the parade route because of the Woodward construction. So we are starting at the same point, which is Livernoy, north of Ten Mile. We are walking up to West Oak Bridge, but instead of turning right, the parade will go left onto Pine Crest and then come back south, Pine Crest to Nine Mile, and then eventually meet up at the Memorial Mall at Nine Mile and Livernoy. So that's the big change. This will be Ferndale's 105th Annual Memorial Day Observance. As far as the parade, we have participants, as far as veterans, we have scout groups, the award-winning Ferndale Public Schools marching band will be there, as well as various city groups. And I would like to extend an invitation for our elected representatives to join us in the parade as well. It's a great tradition and again, we are a different parade route, but we're still going to end up at the Memorial Mall at Nine and Livernoy. It starts at 10 o'clock on Monday, Memorial Day, May 29th. Thank you.
Can I just say that the parade route this year is probably goes up the only hill in Ferndale?
I've been getting my steps in to make sure that I will make it, so.
Thank you for being here.
Good evening, Michael Henness.
Michael.
Restaurant House by You. House is about to celebrate 25 years in business in August. Except for the pandemic, I've never had to lay off a single employee and I've never gotten too worked up about the changes, even when I thought they were not the best thing for our business. When I finally became aware of the 141 Project, I went to every planning meeting I could, every council meeting because this issue was that important. Each meeting I went, I tried to make points that I believe were truthful, pointed, and based on fact with some personal history. I had the chance to reread the parking studies, which I had been quoting in other things from memory. The Rich Associates study from 2006 and the Car Walker 3-60 study from 2017. And they had these conclusions that, no surprise, the east side of Ferndale has a parking deficit. Capacity in the library, Como's, and the private investor lot, which Rich also counted in their study, and the breakfast lot are 100% capacity on the weekends. I know Ferndale just recently did a study, capital study. They haven't looked at, it showed 50% capacity, but they haven't looked at nighttime and they didn't, they waited across Monday through Saturday. So they weren't looking at the weekends and that they were taking an average of the whole time. So this study looked at specific days of the week and we were at 100%. They also included the need for the parking is even greater on the east side in the summer. And that's even considering that that's when most of the people walk and bike. And they didn't put that in the note. That's my observation from this. And they also said, which we know, that Woodward is a physical and psychological barrier that limits customers from parking on one side and doing business on the other. Those are direct quotes. The only thing that's really changed is we've added businesses to the east side since that time. I'm still waiting to hear some compelling reasons to greenlight this project, knowing it will impact the businesses that helped build Ferndale and new businesses that may consider moving here. One planning committee member said during one of the sessions, it would be great to have 70 potential customers right out your back door. But I don't think that matches up with the loss of 250 cars a night on Friday and Saturday. And the only people that are parking there are people that work there in the area and customers coming there to spend money. I heard a comment that we were tired of hearing about parking and want to talk about people. I say without adequate parking, the people who work with me, unfortunately, some of them over 15 years, one of them, allow me about 30 seconds, finish this, please. And one, I've had one place that's been here since the very beginning, may not have jobs if we don't have adequate parking. I heard affordable housing, making $2,000 apartments $1,500 for a short period of time, only available if the city reimburses developers as not affordable housing. I also said I expect we will lose a Como's lot at some point for development and I understood that. I know, but this is the end of it. I know it's always been the city plan and I even heard the council that they hope for maybe possibly a hotel on that spot.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to apply fairness here.
I know.
Can you please wrap up?
I'll say, I would like to hear a compelling reason why, from council, why this project should go through. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Hello, good evening. My name is Oscar Renat, resident of Ferndale, 4-2-6 Albany. I'm here to also talk about parking. I'm here on behalf of Ferndale Elks. We came and we talked about this issue many times and we welcome the change. We see positive changes. You know, the density in the question is really good. It's a good opportunity to increase the amount of residents downtown. However, with this said, we are experiencing some issues and right now with the Vester, I guess, construction, we had our first, you know, like a perfect storm this, you know, this weekend with the festival and the alley being closed and we could not find a place to park and a lot of members left because they said, well, we cannot, you know, we cannot attend to your events because there is really no place to park. We feel that maybe there are some ways, we hearing opportunities maybe to remove the construct of long-term parking on some of these lots like, because, you know, a lot of these long-term parking seems to be on the east side of the city and not much on the west side of the city. Maybe this could be looked at and maybe, you know, some short-term solution could be found. Thank you. Issue number two, and this is a little bit more positive than parking, would like to inform the city council and people in the audience this evening that there is a formation of Ferndale Business Association organization that is actually has taken place, we have incorporated. We are a networking team or group that is welcoming all the business owners and residents to attend. And our first event is going to be at 215 West, West Nine Mile in Ferndale. It's May 18th at 5:30. We hope to see you there and have a good evening. And I yield my time back to Michael Henness.
Sorry, doesn't work that way.
Rafino Valentine, resident.
Hi, Rafino.
Hello, business owner. I'm here to talk about 141. I remember a time in the city before the downtown was what it is now. And it took decades. The prior two administrations worked hard to build the city into what we enjoy today. In fact, the previous two mayors would take me around to conferences so I could tell my story about how Ferndale was the place to open a business. They knew that you get good businesses in the downtown, you build the downtown area, you're going to build your city. I did that happily for years. I could not do that today with good conscience. Recommend any business to spend a nickel in this city with the way the city treats their current businesses. This administration inherited what prior administrations built over decades. And you're going to find out really quick how long it takes, how short it is, to knock that down. Valentine Distilling, we've been a business for 16 years, we've been in Ferndale for 12. House by You, 25 years in business. I moved to Ferndale in part because of House by You, a unique quality restaurant that you're not going to find in Royal Oak. That's a Ferndale-type of restaurant. We weathered COVID. We are currently weathering global inflation. We're currently weathering labor shortages. This administration is going to do what two global crises haven't been able to do. It's going to put us out of business. But you guys already know that because you've done studies on parking. You know what the problem is. So you know what's going to happen, but you just don't care. It seems as if some people just want on their resume the biggest buzzwords of today. Walkability, bikability, road diets. It's all it seems to me because, and for people who aren't running for office again, you're not going to have to face the cold, hard reality that we as business owners are going to have to face. We have tried for over a year to work on this issue. We've tried to work with the city, we've tried to work with the developers in good faith. And all we get in return is bad faith arguments. Right now, we're talking about what the parking looks like at 6 o'clock, at 8 o'clock on the weekends. Am I living in some sort of fantasy world? We need to know what the parking is going to look like after 141 is built. Am I the only one that this is just crazy for? The final thing I'll say, my time has run out, the final thing I'll say, and this is more on a personal note, I used to be proud. I used to love living here. I used to love having two businesses here. When I have anything to do with the city now, when I drive past City Hall, I just get a sick feeling in my stomach. I can't wait to sell my house. I spent my life building this company and you guys are throwing it out.
Good evening. My name is Jordan Valentine. I'm a lawyer with Barnum LLP and I represent Valentine Distilling and House by You, well-established pillars of the Ferndale community that have been adversely affected by the 141 PUD and this city's general lack of planning for the parking in the east downtown area. While they're hoping to work with the city for the resolution without court involvement, they have grown reasonably increasingly concerned about the nonchalant treatment of this immediate and growing problem. Upon review, it's become increasingly clear that there is no viable parking plan. The PUD, as accepted, violates zoning ordinance considerations and ultimately, the city's actions may even constitute a taking, given the substantial harm to the neighbors' lots. To address just even some of the various issues, the PUD failed to consider key zoning considerations concerning parking. Article 24 of the zoning ordinance is set to ensure provisions of off-street parking. Importantly, and what seems to have been completely missed, the PUD review and approval stage failed to consider Section 24 to 22D, which specifically addressed and provides that an area designated as required off-street parking shall not be changed to another use unless equal facilities are provided. We know that equal facilities have not been provided and they weren't even discussed, or at least this section wasn't discussed in the PUD. Importantly, the council may suggest that 180 Vester was going to be this viable solution, but we know that's not the case. In the recent hearing on April 10th, 2023, this council admitted that 180 Vester is not an option, the owner's not moving forward, there are no construction plans for that particular location. And in February 28th, 2022 hearing, this council also admitted that the public, that the city doesn't have the capacity to provide that consolidated public parking in that area despite the lofty goals of the master plan to actually limit parking against the small business owners' wishes. The parking implications caused by 141 Vester and the fall of the 180 Vester plan have and will continue to have a devastating impact on my client's ability to attract customers, resulting in a decline in foot traffic and sales. These businesses have invested time, energy, resources into building the local community and creating jobs for Ferndale residents and they're deeply committed to its success in the future. But they cannot and should not be treated as an afterthought. The city's actions are effectively killing off the business that makes the city exceptional and unique and drove the city's growth. Consider their need and their request for long-term parking.
Hi, Prasad.
Hello, good evening. I, it's sobering to stand here and listen to concerns of businesses about their economic future and to stand here as a resident, asking for consideration about the rights of residents of the city. I have a story to tell. On Sunday morning, August 2nd, 2020, Brittany Gilliam, a 29-year-old black mom of a six-year-old daughter, took her daughter, her 17-year-old sister, and two nieces, aged 12 and 14, for a quote "Sunday fun day" end quote trip to a nail salon in Aurora, Colorado. As they sat in their Dodge SUV, a police car pulled up behind them and the cops ordered the driver and the passengers out at gunpoint and forced them to lie face down on the hot pavement for over 10 minutes on charges of operating a quote "stolen vehicle" end quote. pavement for over 10 minutes on charges of operating a quote "stolen vehicle" end quote. There's video of this out there, I'm not going to do anything about it, I'll send a link for those who might want to watch it. As it turned out, none of them had done anything wrong, the mother and her, and her, and the young women she was with, but they were still detained for about 10 minutes with two of them in handcuffs. The cops attempting but failing to put handcuffs on the six-year-old because her wrists were too small. Here's what the officer filed in his report. Quote, "While on patrol, I observed a hit on a stolen vehicle. The hit was on a blue Dodge Journey, which was bearing Colorado license plate," and he provides the number, "I was able to keep the photograph of the hit up to confirm the plate and see that the vehicle was indeed a blue Dodge." End quote. Later in the report, he writes, quote, "I aired the plate to communications center, who aired that yes, the vehicle was stolen. Shortly after, they aired again stating that the stolen vehicle was a yellow motorcycle with the same license plate." End quote. Police records indicate that the SUV was reported stolen on February 2nd, 2020, and recovered three days later. Yet, a license plate reader had erroneously flagged the car as stolen and the officer received a photo matching the car. The officer checked with the dispatcher who to confirm that the car was stolen and was told it was, but the actual stolen vehicle was a yellow motorcycle with Montana license plates. The Aurora Police Department's view was that the officers did what they were trained to do during a high-risk vehicle stop, and the chief deputy district attorney agreed with them and said, quote, "His office would not be filing criminal charges against the officers involved." In writing his report, he consulted with a former police officer who said, quote, "Given the information they were relying on and the training they had received, the officers involved in the incident were reasonable, prudent, and safe in their choice and use of tactics, weapons, and restraints." And I want to point out, there was a Montana database that was shared with the Aurora, Colorado database. So I ask you, does council still think we're talking about hypotheticals as was stated before last month's vote was taken? And I ask if the officers did nothing wrong and were only following protocol and the victims were innocent of any crime, is it possible that license plate, automated license plate reader technology was the source of this traumatic incident? How many such incidents do we think we would countenance of like this under a rubric of safety and efficiency? Thank you.
Good evening, city council. I actually can answer that question. They say about 10, some stats show that 10% of those license plate readers have errors. So I'm also speaking on the decision to approve automatic license plate reading technology. About 16 cameras, I think, are set to be placed around the city limits. And I'm here to bring attention to the fact that I don't believe the city followed its own anti-racism policy in the process when it passed its 2020 statement to quote, "Promote racial equity through all policies approved by the city council and enhance educational efforts aimed at understanding, addressing, and dismantling racism and how it affects the delivery of human and social services, economic development, and public safety." The city said it would promote racial equity in its decision-making, but it did not do that here with potentially harmful consequences. There, like Prasad said, there are numerous racial justice concerns associated with automatic license plate reading technology, well-documented, available for public discourse. City officials did not present or weigh these concerns publicly and ignored them when they were raised by community members at open forums. The second of the two cities' open forums did not invite outside experts in, just the salespeople from the company, Flock Safety. Community members had asked for racial equity experts to be there, but no one was there and no information about the pros and cons was provided. In fact, it was community members who had to research the issue and ask questions. At the end of the meeting, city officials promised to explore concerns raised and possibly host another community discussion, but that did not happen. Instead, the city moved to put the technology up for council vote with no announcement to anyone who had attended the community sessions, even though someone did manage to line up several people to speak in support of the technology. So of course, it passed city council with a 3-2 vote that night. The way this decision went down went against everything in the city's anti-racism statement. I talked to Michigan Roundtable for Diversity Inclusion after this decision. No one from the city of Ferndale had contacted them. I talked to the ACLU after the decision. No one from the city had contacted them either. I learned nearby communities were considering the same technology. Canton held community meetings, which elevated the pros and the cons, not just presentations from salespeople. That led to them asking ACLU for help in creating a technology policy that would eliminate or reduce potential racial harms. IPSE considered the technology, they turned it down. For all of the anti-racism statement, Ferndale did not contact the Michigan Roundtable or the ACLU, did not respond to public comment and concern about racial harm that the technology could cause. The decision slid in quickly with no significant notice, not telling those who questioned it that would be up for a vote, and then it was approved without any amendments. So 16 cameras will now monitor all those entering the city. Ferndale is a square with four even sides. Eight of those 16 cameras are pointed at our border with the city of Detroit. Half the cameras are aimed at the city with the largest black population in the state of Michigan. This is not racial equitable policymaking. I do ask the council to make good on its promise by, one, conducting a transparent racial equity impact assessment of using this technology over the next two years, and, two, to ensure future decision-making processes require city officials to engage in racial expertise before making a decision. Thank you for your time tonight.
Hi.
Hi, good evening.
Thanks for being here tonight. You can call me Good Citizen. I live right on the corner of Wocot and Woodward Heights.
What's your name?
Good Citizen.
Oh, Good Citizen, okay.
Okay. I live right on the corner of Woodward Heights and Wocot. And they had put those curbs in the street about two years ago. Cars continuously hit those things. You can see the chips out of the top of the curbs, all the way up and down that whole stretch. I hear three to five tires, boom, every day, every night. Sometimes it wakes me up in the middle of sleep, scares the crap out of me. But it's costing taxpayers thousands of dollars. I hope one guy changes his tire and he's pulling his hair out of his head, telling me how it's going to cost him about $1,200 to fix that tire. And it's causing more havoc than I think the safety issue. It's not doing anybody any good with having those curves there. Maybe you could plane off the top so it's not damaging so many tires? I'm not sure. I just thought you should be aware. That's all.
May I, is this in the, what is that, the Urban Rest?
Yes.
At the corner of the Urban Rest parking lot?
Across the street from my house.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And the parking there is terrible. I sometimes have to park down the street because I don't really have a driveway, but I see this new project going in, 7800, something like that. And I just think it's going to be crazy if you guys go ahead with that project. But this is my opinion. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Good evening, hi.
Hi, I'm David Leonard. I own the property at Woodward Heights, no railroad tracks, I got three corners. Now, the southeast corner is the next subject. And I'm speaking on behalf of it because I've had that property since 1994. And I've been looking at that Ice House and the empty lot for all those years. And the new development that they're proposing, it's going to be such an added blessing, or whatever you want to call it, to that area because it's just been a dead, ugly piece of property that hasn't moved. Nobody has really gone to develop it. And they're presenting a development plan that's going to spruce up the area, at least make it a better transition from commercial to industrial area. And we'd really like to see this moved and passed and get on. Plus, I have four acres of vacant property and once I can see what's going to happen, that we will develop that too. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Mayor, it seems like those comments might have been relative to the public hearing. I don't know if you want to just clarify that for the speaker.
Yeah, we allow things to be on and off the agenda, so that will be for the public hearing later. But thank you, Dave, for being here. All right, is there any public comment?
I just wanted to see if there's still time left.
Yes, go ahead.
Dan Reedy, 22824 Woodward Avenue, Danny's Irish Pub. I just want to lend my voice to the previous speakers about the parking. I've been here, Ferndale, since 1946. I've seen this town once booming, then go downhill, and now coming back. And I'm with the other speakers saying this might go downhill again if we don't address this situation. Years ago, when I bought my bar, there were very few businesses along there and they were smaller, they didn't have the traffic we have today. We had a parking in the medium in those days. And they came to us and they said, "We're going to get rid of the parking in the medium, but we're going to provide you with a deck parking behind you." I can't remember how many years ago that was, I'm thinking maybe 25, 30. We're still waiting for that deck parking. You guys have to do something. You can't allow this to keep going like it is. It's getting ridiculous over there. I can't even get out of the parking lot half the time at 6 o'clock at night on a Friday or Saturday night. I'm not going to take a whole lot of time with this. I've been here long enough, I know what's going on. I've seen it change and I hope you guys will address the situation finally. That's it.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to make public comment? Okay, none, I'm going to move on to our next item of the public hearing. And we only have one item tonight, which is 6A, is the consideration of the conditional rezoning planned unit development and special land use applications for 700 and 800 Woodward Heights, Sidwell number 2427406, 2427406005, and 2427406006. And it has been called the Edge Project. We have four steps to a public hearing. The first step is a presentation by city staff and invite the applicant to make comments. Step two is opening up for a public comment to hear what residents might have on the thought of this project. Step three is just opening up to council for questions of fact-finding from staff and the applicant. And then we'll move into step four, which is a motion and comment from council. So take it away, Roger.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. As the mayor mentioned, this is four applications before you, or actually, three applications before you, conditional zoning, a planned unit development, and a special land use for 700 or 800 to 800 Woodward Heights. I'm going to take just one minute to go through a timeline and then turn over the applicant that I think is here to give a full presentation so you don't hear it twice. But generally, the request before you is for the redevelopment of the Ice House, the building known as the Ice House, which they'll show, in addition, 100 apartment units and with some ancillary retail associated with it. Just a little bit of background, the applicant came before Planning Commission for, as a discussion item, on March 16th, 2022. They received feedback, they came back to Planning Commission on June 15th, 2022. They submitted an application for consideration in November, I'm sorry, March 2020, I'm sorry, November 2022. They received feedback from Planning Commission, they tabled their application, they came back March 15th, 2023 with an improved development. At that meeting, the Planning Commission had some concerns regarding a zoning versus a conditional zoning, so the application was tabled and they came back for April, the April 5th meeting, and then subsequently, they came back for the May 8th meeting. Again, before you is three applications, rezoning, a planned unit development, and a special land use. Those votes, there was a motion to approve those applications by Planning Commission, and it was seconded, and it did not pass 5-2. It did not fail, but the motion to approve did not pass or come with a recommendation of approval. I mean, it was 5-2. We had a, we only had seven people where nine are usually there, and we need six affirmative votes. The site plan that ends at Planning Commission that failed 5-2, but we've talked to the city attorney, and if the city council looks favorable upon these three applications, we will go back to Planning Commission for reconsideration of the site plan. So with that, I'll turn over the applicant that I think will give a full presentation, and then staff's here to answer any follow-up questions.
Can I just get clearer clarity on process? So council, if we vote affirmative, yes, tonight, it goes back to the Planning Commission?
For a site plan reconsideration.
The site plan, but the conditional rezoning passes and the PUD passes.
And the special use would pass, yes.
The special use pass.
Yeah, so they did.
Chair, there are three motions.
Yes, yes, I just want to be clear on what goes back to the Planning Commission.
These three will not be going back. These will, these will stop here if you approve it. What will go back to them for reconsideration is the site plan that did not get the required votes to pass.
Okay, got it. Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you. And I'll introduce Tim, I think he's going to speak from the applicant.
Hi, Tim.
Hello, good evening. Tim Lockren, Robertson Brothers Home, 6905 Telegraph Road. Well, thank you for your time tonight, it's good to see you all again. Last time I was here, it was for the final approvals of our Wilson Park Village and Parkdale Towns projects, which we're very happy with, hopefully, proud of that as those projects as we are. So we're here again tonight on a different project. I want to first introduce our team. We've got Dennis Griffin, who's a partner of Robertson's on the project. From Robertson, we have Darian Newbecker and Jim Clark, and we also have Tad Carey from Land Design Studios, going to be tag-teaming me on, I won't take too much time, but on the presentation. We're very excited to be here. It's been a long process, but we're, we hope to provide what we consider a transformational mixed-use development. We've had lots of neighborhood engagement over the past year or so, and we've had neighborhood meetings, we've had nearly unanimous support. If you've been to our Planning Commission meetings, you've seen a lot of people speaking in support of the project, a lot of support letters. That doesn't happen by accident. I think it's a very unique project and it's really, you know, we call it the edge because it's really on the edge and it provides kind of a nice nexus of uses in an area that I think a lot of people want to see something there. We've worked very hard with the Planning Commission. We saw them several times, had a lot of, you know, great feedback for us. Every time we came back, we improved the site quite a bit. And we'll show you what we've, what we've changed. We are providing double the open space that's required of a PUD. We're providing considerable storm improvements to the overall area, it'll improve the situation all throughout that area, while we're also including green infrastructure as part of that. And we just believe it's a very creative way to create a sense of place in this, in this location. So let me, if it's okay with you, I'm going to just go through a quick presentation. Is it it? This one here? This one here? All right, thank you, go. So just from a context overview, it's really right at the corner of the industrial sub-district. Again, another reason why we called it the Edge, kind of that blurred line from residential to industrial to a really exciting retail and, sorry, I'm going to put this up a little bit, and restaurants, bars in the area. So we've got Drifter Coffee right there, so it's really kind of a nexus of a lot of different uses that I think we're going to be really playing on. And again, the location is Woodward Heights, really right at where the train tracks are west of Hilton. So the existing site conditions, it's very unique. If you've ever driven by that building on Woodward Heights and thought, what the heck is that? It is absolutely fascinating to be inside of that building. In fact, we had a tour with some of the Planning Commission members, which I thought was very helpful, to show them why we think it's so important to save this building. That is a major component of this project as far as the Ice House building and what it's going to be transformed into. We've got some pictures inside, it really doesn't do it any justice. You'd have to see it really to believe it. And again, I know Mr. Pollock was there, but a lot of members of the Planning Commission had, had taken a look at that and kind of saw what we saw as far as the vision. And not just the building itself, but also how the site overall with our design and what Tad has, has come up with, really puts it all together. As I mentioned, Drifter Coffee's on the corner, Urban Rest is just to the east of us, you've got the Ice House building, then you've got some really old, dilapidated industrial buildings. Then you've got some really old, dilapidated industrial buildings, kind of sandwiched in that little corner on the bottom. It's really not, those buildings have no useful life left. And the site just does not configure any way possible to redevelop that as an industrial building. So really, the future use of that would be maybe parking. I mean, there's really nothing, nothing you can do on that site, again, other than what we're hoping to show you tonight. So I mentioned that tour. These are just some of the pictures of that. On the right, it's really hard to explain, but this building was, this building was built incredible, it was in the early 1900s, right before refrigeration. And I mean, right before. They basically came up with it like a year after, so the building was kind of not in use for any significant portion of time. But the way they built it, and I can't really explain it very well, but, you know, sawdust and brick, and, I mean, it is so thick, these walls. It'd be a shame to do anything other than transform it into something that's special. So we held a meeting there, a public meeting there, and just kind of shared our plans with, with the Planning Commission on March 3. The existing industrial buildings to the south, now that's a totally different story. None of them have any useful life left. These are some of the glamorous pictures that I'm showing here. Just kidding about that. This really kind of is indicative of what you see out there currently with the existing So whenever we look at a property, we always want to look at the master plan. And certainly, you know, we have a ton of respect for Ferndale, everything you're doing. As you can tell, we're big fans of Ferndale. We looked at your master plan, and we saw a lot of really interesting things, particularly about this site. Talking about adaptive reuse, that's something that I, I know the city is, is looking for that they put in, you put in the master plan. You know, green stormwater infrastructure, which I talked about, we'll go into a little more detail. Redevelopment of areas, specifically the industrial area. In fact, this project was actually mentioned, so in the master plan update, so you can see how long, you know, this, this idea has been out there for this, this project. Now, obviously, you know, there's a slight loss of industrials on land as a part of this, but it's really less than 2%. And as I mentioned, really, the industrial, the usable industrial areas, that southern tip of it, if anything. There'd be no reason, I can't see a future life of the Ice House building as industrial. So we really thought it was a great opportunity to redevelop this and reimagine and rethink the, the entire five acres. And it is located at the edge of the district. Again, that edge theme just keeps coming up. It's not that, it's not smack dab in the middle of your industrial area. It is right kind of at the nexus of a lot of different uses as they come together. So again, we looked at your, your master plan and, and what your vision for the area is, and we think that our plan meets a lot of those. And five out of the seven planning commissioners did as well, by the way. Here's the site plan. So it's, it's very unique, obviously. I want to start at the very north. I don't know if, well, I can just kind of guide you through it. Along Woodward Heights, the Ice House building, it's on the, it's sort of in the middle there. That's the, you know, obviously, multi-level building there. And we wanted to create that as a focal point of the project. So we're saving that in all of its glory. We'll be, we'll be, you know, putting on some murals on that to really kind of show the historical aspects of, of the building. But we didn't really want to touch too much of the exterior. It's really a special place. The interior, of course, will be transformed into a very interesting kind of community and retail space. But what we did was, we found the, there was this area we're calling the front yard. Tad's going to go into a lot of these details, as like I said before, he geeks out on this stuff. But that front yard, historically, it's really kind of been used as the public, and, you know, we haven't really said anything about that. We're actually going to welcome that and create something that's welcoming that says, "This is a front yard. This is for the public to use." So that's an important component of the project. Then there's the front porch, which is actually used mostly by Drifter, but also for public engagement as well. We're really not doing much with that. We're going to, you know, upgrade it a little bit, but really keep it more of a niche, a niche space and something that's really unique to the site. So those two areas, we think are very important, because that's our front face. We call them the front yard and the front porch. And it really blends seamlessly what, what our vision is for the Ice House. And of course, Drifter Coffee's not going away. That's going to be part of, part of the whole project. We're creating a woo nerf, which if anybody remembers me from before, really wanted to build a woo nerf in Parkdale, didn't happen. So we get to, hopefully, if it all goes to plan, build a woo nerf here. Woo nerf is basically just, I think you probably all know, but a pedestrian-level street, where pedestrians have the right of way. It's kind of a joint-use street, if you will. And it's at grade, so it really focuses on the pedestrian, which is something we really find, find very cool.
Can you point out the woo nerf on here?
Yeah, of course. Does this work?
We have a shared street here, too, in front of the deck. Partial one.
Right here. So right now, there is an access there. I think it's a two-way access. We're proposing it to be one-way and really at pedestrian level. And you're going to see some pictures of this, which I think hopefully will wow you, because I think it's very, very cool what's happening there on the east side. As part of that, it'll also be an artist alley, so we're putting some murals on the building adjacent to it, and just creating a unique wow space that Tad's, Tad's going to go through on all of this. Kind of rounding the corner, some EV charging or solar, we're calling it a solar, kind of like a solar charging area, where that'll be incorporated into a, I don't want to say food truck, but a vendor space. And then a very interesting patio area to be colorful, scoring. So that'll be kind of the Ice House area, but it's really, we really wanted to combine this together with what the other part of this project is, as you can see in the south, a residential component. So what we're planning on doing, you can see where it says metal pergola, that'll be a very pedestrian-focused walkway, where the pedestrians would have the right of way to get down to the Makerspace, which is really kind of a, you know, a small retail component to have sort of a mixed-use area south of there and apartment building, which will show you some elevations. We're proposing a four-story apartment building with studios and one bedrooms. So you can see it kind of really integrates much more than it did originally. I'll say the Planning Commission really put a lot of thought into this, and we had a lot of good engagement with the Planning Commission, which, you know, obviously garnered us the five votes on that. And just to mention there again, that we have double the open space requirement, which is under a PUD. Again, Tad's going to go through a lot of these and answer questions that I can't. I don't think you want me to go through all of these, but again, you've got a PUD section. You've got to go above, we have to go above and beyond with the PUD. We know that. So you've got, I think, 12 recognized most substantial benefits that, they're not all required. I don't think any site could have every single one of these. But we really wanted to focus on what your benefits requirements are and how we can best serve. And that kind of guided what our site plan turned out to be. Some of these were easy. Some of them, we just could never do. Significant natural features are just aren't, unless you consider the, you can't consider the Ice House as a natural feature. So we really didn't have anything to preserve. But of course, a complementary mix of uses, that's what this project is all about. We call it horizontal mixed use. But having those, those uses together on one site plan, we thought was very important, not only for the site itself, but also for the greater neighborhood, which, by the way, the neighborhood really has kind of embraced that idea of bringing in some interesting uses to the neighborhood. Sustainable building and site design, obviously, will bring everything up to code that we're building and above. But more importantly, we've got a lot of green, stormwater infrastructure, which I think is, is going to just, you know, be transformational for the entire area. Open space greenways, you could see, we've provided some of that, but I don't know if we necessarily hit the exact requirements for that. Transition from adjacent land uses, we say not, well, I think we are, just because it is kind of a, you know, kind of a buffer from, some of the residential and buffer from the industrial. Provision of affordable housing, not specifically on this project. But of course, the, the size of the units, we can get into that if you want, you know, certainly would lead to an attainable option rather than what you see maybe downtown. Diversification of housing types, this is an option that really, I think you don't see too much of just because of the, the types of units that we're proposing. Of course, we're preserving historical buildings. Improvement to public street system. We really like the fact that you've got the Mogo system nearby. We really wanted to play up on that and really kind of weave in with your existing improvements you've already made to the city, which I think Woodward Heights has a lot of potential even going forward. And pedestrian and transit-oriented development kind of fits into what I'm just talking about there. Of course, we have multiple small parcels that we're assembling, which you just can't do otherwise without having a kind of a cohesive PUD. And then the removal and renovation of lighted buildings. We're removing what I think we have to when we're renovating, which is really, what is really important. So again, I think we're hitting a lot of the requirements of the PUD, and we thought it was important to point that out. Just quickly on this, there's, you may ask why we didn't put some of the development on the northeastern portion, north is to the left, sorry. But there are just, there's a lot of DTE easements, just, you know, traversing all over. So we wanted to point that out, that, you know, there is a rhyme or reason why, what kind of guided us initially with how we laid out some of the buildings. So just to explain that. And then I talked about this a little bit, the Mogo bike share that's right by Urban Rest was just to the east of us. So that's kind of informed us a lot on what we, what we kind of envision our future uses to be and who will be utilizing some of your existing infrastructure. And these are just showing where the bike rack locations are. It's very important to us, obviously, to meet and exceed any of your requirements. And of course, we'll have electric vehicle charging stations, stations. We want to future-proof this as well, so we'll make sure we have enough conduit in it, you know, to basically serve a greater portion of this. But we want to make sure we have enough EV stations by the apartment building, also up by the Ice House building, and then barrier-free spaces as well. So that was important to us. And then just quickly on the landscape open space, the requirement is 10%. We provided almost 20%. So you can see there, there's quite a bit of green on there. There is, there is parking. Obviously, there's a parking lot. You know, we try to minimize the impact of that as much as possible with some of this green infrastructure. You know, we've got some rain gardens and that sort of elements. So all of that kind of adds to that double green space than, than what would be required in a PUD. So I'm going to hand it over to Tad, who will, as I mentioned, loves to geek out on this. So he really enjoyed this project.
So I guess I'm the landscape architect, planner, geek. And one of the things that I've been practicing for over 30 years, and the big buzzword now is place-making and defining place. There's another term, genus loci, the spirit of place. And they really charged me with trying to figure out what's the there there and do something really unique with this. And I, in 30 years, I've never really had a project where we've been able to take a site like this and existing conditions and kind of elevate it to where we've elevated to. So one of the first things that we did is we went, we called your Historic Society, and we wanted to understand a little bit more about the Ice House. And we found out it was Detroit City Ice and Fuel Company. They occupied it in 1942. And the woman that works at your Historical Society said, "I think I can show you some advertisements that were done from back then." So we got a copy of these ones around there, and it had the polar bear on it. So we thought, "Wow, that's kind of interesting." Obviously, Ice House, the polar bear. So the question was, you know, what could we do with this? So we thought, "What if we did a mural with the polar bear on the side of this big sort of empty facade?" And so that was sort of the beginning of that. And obviously, we ran around the city, we've looked at some of the murals that you, you actually had awards given to different businesses for doing it, so it seemed to fit. Also, there's graphics and murals on many of the buildings within the sub-industrial district as well. So we're kind of playing off what's already there. Again, we spent a lot of time in the boots-on-the-ground, looking at the, the new businesses in that sub-industrial district. And then to the left of this, you can see the front lawn. It's currently being used for various venues, but we want to further enhance that with those little archways. That'll all be reclaimed metal from these old industrial buildings on the site. So we went around and did a reconnaissance. We thought, you know, these buildings are old, and they can't be repurposed, but the materials can be. So we're going to try to work with local artists to create all the elements that we'll show you in this and repurpose those throughout the development. And then to the right of there is, is sort of the patio area, and that'll be a venue for food trucks. You can see a little food truck in the rendering there. So the next thing we did is, and there was a lot of comments from the planning commissioners, you know, you need to, you need to improve the front porch, is what we're calling it, which is really a space that the patrons of Drifter Coffee uses. And the more we looked at it, it's like, the patrons have figured this out. We don't really need to do a lot other than improve maybe some of the pavement, put some bollards in where the circular drive is, but let them continue to do what they're doing. They're activating the space. They won an award, you can see on the lower left there, 1921, for a beautification project. And it's like, let's, let's not fix something that's not broke. So improvements were very minimal there. And then again, these are some of the activities we were able to download, these from Drifter Coffee's website. They have music venues, they have plant sales, they have crafts, and all kinds of different things going on. So again, we didn't want to do a whole lot, you know, only improve that pavement area. It's kind of some old asphalt that's, that's cracked. We're going to do like a crushed aggregate pavement and add a couple removable bollards there just to keep cars from driving up in that area. So we thought that was really cool, just to see how that space developed and how we really can't do a lot of improvements on it. But as I said earlier, we can do a little bit on this front porch. You know, we thought this could be a great area for yoga, meditation, arts and crafts, food vendors, dog area, lawn games. It's kind of endless, sort of let the public define what the programmability is of that area. But we would define it with the little archways. I don't know if you know the term gabian baskets, but they're these, these baskets out of wire mesh, and we're going to use all the broken concrete from on-site to fill those up and, again, repurpose and reuse as much of the material as possible. One of the things that came up at the Planning Commission meeting, we weren't meeting the criteria for the, the screening of the parking lot along Woodward Heights. So Dennis has been collecting all kinds of wonderful, the Ice House is full of all these relics that he's collected from different, different industrial sites and his properties throughout all of Michigan. And these giant O-rings, if you will, on the bottom, they're about four feet in diameter. We thought, "What if we integrated those as a screen fence? Clean them up, paint them, do whatever we need to do with them, and then integrate that with some living hedges and some landscape." And then you can kind of see it in the background, that's where, this is where a lot of the EV charging stations locate along Woodward Heights, too. So again, meeting your screening requirements, but trying to do it in a creative way with reusing some of these old industrial materials. And this is probably the most exciting part, the illustrator that we use, he and his wife also do murals. So when he was doing his research, he found some old vintage photos of Woodward Avenue and Ferndale from back in the day. And I think, that's the next slide coming up, but the idea of this artist alley that we sort of create this alley, as Tim had mentioned, it's a woo nerf, one direction coming towards us, a shared street. And then Dennis owns the building to the right also, at least up to a certain point, and would create this whole mural using local artists or a series of murals. It could be ever-changing, they could be permanent, we haven't really decided on that. But what a way to, again, express the arts and do something fun with a kind of utilitarian space. So that was the idea there. Yeah, this was one of the old vintage photos we found on Woodward Avenue from back in the day. So these could actually be part of those murals as well, with the colored graphics and whatnot. Lots of opportunities there. And then the patio, this is on the south side of the site. This is really a flexible space. This is, you know, depending what kind of venues and things are happening within there, it could be ever-changing, but the idea of food trucks, having cornhole games, whatever kinds of uses. But to make it interesting, we thought we'd do some of these paving patterns you're seeing, where they use lots of creative and colorful paints. And again, get the artists involved to do something really special in this area. So, and this is interesting, I've been collecting these images of, of these gutters for years and years. And finally, the opportunity came where these giant gutters are collecting all the water from the rooftop of this. And again, getting some artists involved and finding some different ways to capture that water in a creative way and then put them into some rain gardens at the base of this facade, basically, of the building. And again, we think it's just something real fun and bringing exposure to this roof water that you wouldn't think about otherwise. And then, as I said, we were, we did a lot, spent a lot of time on the site, and I kept seeing all these metal stacks and metal here, metal there. So we thought, again, what if we got a local artist involved and created a pergola, this sort of promenade that connects the Ice House, Woodward Heights, to the Makerspace and the new apartment building? And so these are just concepts of what that could be. But again, we'd be working with reusing the materials on-site and local artists to help develop what this would actually be in the end. No shortage of materials to do this either.[1755.97] And then finally, green infrastructure does a big part of your master plan. It's a big part of where we're going with trying to do things more sustainable, low-impact development. So we came up with a series of rain gardens, some bioretention areas. We actually called it bio-swell. I was sort of called out by a planning commissioner because there's not a lot of slope from one end to the other. So it's probably more of a bioretention area, I think she was right on that on our last meeting. We're creating the solar panels in this little pavilion area. The solar power will be used to operate the tibbly lights throughout the, on the patios and some of the other areas, however far we can make it go. And then the last thing, I spent a couple of years in Europe. When I would take the train to Italy, they would have these fields of sunflowers. And I went to Dennis, I said, hey Dennis, what if we just planted sunflowers along the railroad tracks and then use that as pollinators for the bees? Donate the sunflower seeds to the bird conserves or different uses? And he said, yeah, let's go for it. That sounds, it's a low-hanging fruit, and it's just another fun thing to really create there, there, and a special place. Again, this is the plan view on the left of the apartment building. And the Maker Space is sort of the one-story, one-and-a-half-story or retail space on the lower level. And then, again, these are some of the high-quality materials they're proposing to use for the apartment building. Lots of brick, lots of metal, and, you know, really fitting with that industrial theme and a little edgy, no pun intended. And then getting some bird's-eye views, kind of showing this whole concept, you know, rendered all in context and how we're trying to integrate all these different things together. So again, we really think, again, from my professional standpoint in terms of place-making, being contextual, understanding the sustainability aspects, we put a lot forward in trying to create something really, really special for your community. And we think it's going to be a benchmark project should you approve it or with developing it. That is it for us, and it's Tim's closing comments.
So I told you about Tad, I was right, right? Really loves this. Anyway, you know, we just want to leave with, we've worked really hard to garner support from the neighborhood. Worked very hard to garner support from the planning commission. I know it didn't come with a recommendation. I think your ordinance is a little quirky in that it requires a full six when, you know, half, we had seven people there. So we worked really hard to garner that support from the planning commission as well. So we're happy with the way it turned out. We'd love to get started, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have as well as my team. So, thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to step two. We do public comment, public comment first so that council can hear and follow up with questions based off of what they heard. So I'm going to open up the public comment at 8:22. Is there anybody here who would like to make comment about this project? Hi there, welcome. You can state your name and follow the three-minute rule and be mindful of the clock, please. Hi, welcome.
Hello, Michael Daley. I live at the Bermuda Horton Triangle, just right in front of the Edge Project. Lived here about five years, I've lived in Ferndale since 91. I have several properties here, involved with the community and different parts of the government and that. And this is a great project that really needs to go through. I'm also involved in construction, and not many projects come across so thorough like this. I've attended many of the planning boards and I was, I don't know how to say it, disappointed that it didn't go through. I hope that whatever political variations and all that enables this project to go through. It really needs to go through. There is a lot of community support for this. I've seen very little disagreement with this. The project speaks for itself. So that's it, under a minute and a half.
Thank you for coming and being part of the process. Good evening.
Evening, hi. My name's Reed Turnbull. I live at 519 East Oak Ridge, fairly near to the project. Generally, I'm in favor. I think the city council should recommend to move ahead. I think as long as the developers are aware of some of the challenges and they seem confident that they can handle it, I think they'll have a really great project on their hands. I have a couple questions, maybe more for the developers, but I'm a real solar geek, and I'm excited by the fact that you have some covered parking solar. I'm just curious how large that system is and if you can make it larger. And I'm also, I had a question maybe to the city. I haven't seen it in minutes because it's probably been a while, but the brown field adjacent to, I think it's a brown field adjacent to this project, I'm curious if there's any plans there at Gainesboro and Woodward Heights, maybe some synergies with this project? Anyway, thank you.
Thanks, Reed. Good evening, hi.
My name is Jennifer. I've been a resident since 1990. My son is going to Ferndale Elementary.
Can you talk into the microphone?
Oh, my son is going to Ferndale Elementary and being in one of two, Ferndale High School. I don't have a problem where the city starts to develop, but I have a problem where so many big buildings comes in, you know? And then it becomes like Chicago, it becomes, it's finally going to lose the history of what it is. I know you have to develop the city, but when you have all of these big buildings come in, then nobody wants to live in them. It become an ice shore. I'm asking the developers, are they going to move into the city from their suburbs where they're living, after they build all these buildings into the city? It's not fair. And is the residents of Ferndale have any say in the development coming in and building these buildings? I don't think it's fair. I think that people should, instead of walking and seeing a building put up, I think that Ferndale residents should have some kind of idea. It's just that people sitting on there has some kind of idea in the city that they live because they pay taxes here, and it should be their idea and their decision, some of their decision if they want all of these big buildings put up. Look at Royal Oak, look at Jump, all those buildings, you know? So I don't see why you guys should turn Ferndale into a city that. You know, let it breathe, let Ferndale city breathe and let people have a decision, you know? And let some of the history remain in Ferndale city instead of bringing all the developments that just making money off of these small cities and then moving out and not living here. And then we have to live with this disaster. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Marvin Hairston, Vice President, General Manager of Spraytech Inc. Hello to the council, hello mayor. I'm here to express my opposition to the project. While the renderings and the plans look great, I think it's very impractical to put a residential area in an industrial park with such close proximity to my facility. The structure that they're proposing, the residential structure, would be as close to my building as the library is to this building. We are a just-in-time automotive, military, and construction supplier. We have a fair amount of truck volume. We have a lot of activity. We are a 24-hour, six-day-a-week operation. I'm going to be very honest in that we're loud. Sometimes there is an odor. I have 40 something odd employees, and I think that the construction of a residential area in a banquet hall is going to create a traffic and a pedestrian nightmare. I think that this project looks great, but the location is not, the location that they've selected just isn't conducive to this particular project. We've been in Ferndale for a very long time, since 1984. I've been there from day one. I've cultivated our building. I've been a very good neighbor. As a matter of fact, a lot of the buildings that are around that area, we've had relationships with, going back to Midwest Wire, the Flexon, which was our neighbor for many years, to Swim Tees, which was across the street, made all of her T-shirts. Dennis has come in and bought up a bunch of those properties, but we've had a relationship prior to any of this. So I want to go on the record to just say Spraytech is in total opposition to this. I think what they're trying to do is great, but I think this location is not the right location for this particular project. And I've seen the whole industrial park transform before my eyes, and I'm not against change. We've never, I've never opposed any of the projects, from Urban Rest to the meat market, have added, but this doesn't make sense. This will have an adverse effect on my operation, potentially, and I just don't think it fit in the area. And I hope that the council will consider that. And the reason why, or part of the reason why the planning commission did not approve it was because I was at that meeting, having found out two days prior to about the project. So if there's engagement about, with the neighbors being made aware of the project, nobody told me. I received a notice two days before the meeting, and that was my first knowledge of this particular project. Thank you.
Thank you, Marvin. Good evening.
Good evening, council. I'm Michael Blake. At 2441 Walcott, it's Jefferson Iron Works. We're, I'm a third-generation business owner there, and we're being on the corner of Drayton Walcott. This building is going to be two cars, two parking cars across from us, a stone throw away. As Marv said, we're an industrial shop, we're a specialty machine shop that does a lot of tool and die for automotive. We are 24 hours, six days a week. We have heavy tractor-trailers coming in all times, day and night, heavy fork trucks, and this development is going to hinder our business, that's for sure. And I asked council to go on Google and just take a Google Maps, walk down that road. There are no sidewalks. It's cars in and out all times of day. It's dirty, it smells, you know, it's industrial for a reason. And this site plan is really nice, and they've spent a lot of money on selling this to you. And they've made it really pretty, and that's nice, but the reason for that is because it's obviously not a good fit. Their plan doesn't show the buildings around it. And if you were a resident, you would not want to walk your dog in this location on Myrtle or Drayton at the end of those roads. It's terrible. I would never recommend that someone live right there at the end of that road. You've got the train running by all day, all night. Woodward Heights is a truck route for us businesses to be able to operate, and you're going to have people coming in and out of there with, coming over the train tracks, which we know what, we know what happens when the train's going by. The traffic is going to be a nightmare. And if you have an event and your parking lot's full, cars are going to overfill, overspill into where we're conducting our business. Like I said, there's not even a sidewalk. So it's just not safe or practical for residents. It hurts our business, and we hope that you guys look up, look out for us and don't fall for a sales job on a pretty building that just doesn't belong. If you made it a restaurant and a park that the street ended and it totally disconnects us, maybe. But for a hundred unit to be right there in the bottom corner makes no sense, no logical sense. I wouldn't want anyone to live there. This apartment's going to be looking right down on my building that has lights all around it. We're machining metal parts all day and all night. It just makes no sense. So I hope that you look after us business owners and the residents and protect this area and go against this, please. Thank you.
Again, my name is David Leonard. I was here in 2000 trying to get a self-storage approved. Well, finally, we got it approved. We built it. It was very successful, and it really added to the community. Now, this all belonged to Reichel Chemical, and I purchased the rest of the Reichel property. We have Leonard Brothers on the west side of, right across from this project. And I own the empty four acres across the street, and I have the office building on the other side. And we moved here in 94 from Royal Oak at Hudson and the railroad tracks. That was all industrial. Now, you look at the whole area now, it's all apartments. It's a beautiful area, and it's right on the railroad tracks. Hudson, Harrison, and all that. And I don't see the railroad tracks being a detriment to the project. It wasn't a detriment in Royal Oak. And I think it's a project that would work. Once we know what's going to happen here, we have the other four acres that we want to develop as some type of public service, something that will service the public again. So I'd like to see it done. It's very viable. We're going to be buying another 60,000-square-foot building just behind our building on Gainesboro and Woodward Heights. We're going to stay, and we would like to see something developed across the street. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. All right, last call for public comment. All right, see, oh. Are you reading someone for public comment? Okay. For the record.
Actually, you sent the sin, the email? You sent the sin?
Yeah.
Okay. It was actually hit. This is your son? Okay. So I have one more for the record from Paul Leonard. Hello and good evening. My name is Paul Leonard, owner of the property located at 620 Woodward Heights, which is immediately west of the railroad tracks. I've owned this property for just over 30 years. I've been operating my company at this location the same duration. Unfortunately, I am unable to attend tonight's meeting. I attended the previous two planning commission meetings in regards to this property. At both meetings, I spoke in favor of moving forward this project. The plan that Dennis Griffin and Robertson Brothers Homes have come up with would be a great addition to the Ferndale community, especially since the land has sat dormant for decades. As a business owner in Ferndale, I believe that it is important to support projects like this because of the potential it brings other businesses, potential employees, potential customers, and potential growth. So I ask you to please support this project by passing all three applications.
All right. So that, I believe, concludes public comment for those who want to make public comment. And I am closing the public hearing at 8:37, and we are now going to move on to step three, folks, which is comment, or questions, a fact from council to city staff and the applicant. So I'm going to open it up to council. I usually defer to the city council liaison to make a comment first, so I open it up to Councilman Polika, who represents the council on the planning commission, if you like to start this off.
Sure, but I do have a question. Were there any questions that were asked through public comment that staff may want to answer or, I don't believe there were, that I recognized?
I don't believe so.
I mean, this was all comments. I didn't hear any questions asking for more detail about something specific. Am I correct?
I think this is the solar panel.
I think the applicant can answer that one when the time comes.
Okay. So they've provided a lot of information, so I'm not going to add a lot of information. I am going to share some thoughts and opinions. When it, when the developers first brought the project to the planning commission, there was no wow factor with the project, and I think they knew that from our reaction, you know? It was a neat idea. We had a lot of concerns about a lot of issues that we addressed. This was back in November of '22, I believe. And made a lot of suggestions, and when they returned to us in March, they had addressed, I believe, all of our concerns and added a lot more that we weren't expecting. One of the issues that I brought up at the November meeting was the, the lack of stormwater containment on the site and to not have to direct everything into the drains. And I encouraged them to come back with something in regards to, you know, forcing that water back into the ground instead of forcing it into our storage. I was really impressed with them creating the rain gardens and the bio, it's not a bio-swell, what is that, a bio-wall or something? Tension wall? Tension wall? So yeah, so very impressive. The property is a very unique layout because it is on the edge of residential. It, in my opinion, it ties in very well with our interest through our master plan of adding residential to the industrial zone, to kind of make that combination within that area. And I understand, and I think most of the Planning Commission understood the concerns of the industrial areas. The, I believe that they mentioned the, the original plan called for residential much closer to Woodward. It wasn't until they identified the underground wiring, the DTE wiring, that they were forced to move it down the space. But from my perspective of the viability of the lot, it has a weird shape, it has a weird connection to it and it has been, you know, vacant for a number of years. If industry, if industry was interested in developing it, it would have happened by now. I was on the tour of those buildings. The, the buildings to the south are in horrible condition. When he said that those photos were the glamour shots, he wasn't kidding. Those are in rough, they're not savable and I'm all about saving buildings. The, the Ice House itself, which is a very impressive building, it's built like a thermos because it was designed to act that way. So it's really two stories. You have the main floor and then what, 20 feet up or so, you have the second floor and then it's just open all the way to the roof to house the ice. What more can you do with that other than creating it as a storage unit? If you want to save the building, you're not going to be able to add floors inside. At least I don't think you're going to be able to do that safely. So it has a very unique use, it's a limited use. I think what they're proposing is a very positive use in saving the building. One of the issues, because the business owners came to the Planning Commission and shared their concerns, one of the issues that I raised or suggestions to the developers were within their lease agreement, can they put something in that talks about, you know, the renters are understanding that they're living in an industrial area. You have to understand that you're going to have unusual smells, you're going to have unusual noise, you know. You're going to have to live with this. Don't be calling the police, you know, every other night because you're hearing, you know, slamming metal sounds because the police aren't going to come for a noise issue. And they were very receptive of adding something to their contract. These are our market rate apartments. The market is going to decide what the cost is going to be for those apartments. I understand there were two people that, on the Planning Commission, that were against the project. I shouldn't say they were against the project. They were against this particular residential on the site. And while I cannot speak for them, what I believe their concern was, is that the master plan talks about incorporating residential into the industrial area. And I believe their interest was more in converting existing industrial, so existing buildings that already are in that area, that people might buy them and convert them into, you know, four or six or eight lofts. You can't do that with the buildings, obviously, that are on site. They're just in no condition to do that. I don't think that they were necessarily supportive of a brand new apartment structure on this property. Not necessarily the incorporation of industrial into the industri, or incorporation of residential into the industrial zone. Because they do understand the, the master land use plan that states the interest and I believe they support that. But in this instance, they weren't, they didn't like the idea of this particular residential project on this particular piece of property.
All right. Thank you for that explanation.
Sure.
And background. Opening up for other council members to ask questions for Roger or the applicant.
If I may, through the chair. Just had a couple, I have a couple of questions. Just one to, one, someone mentioned to Google what the area looks like. And I went a little further than that. I actually went over there yesterday and walked all around it. And it is definitely a site that can use some spruce up. It was, and it's been that way for years, so I like that area being developed into something. I like that idea of that. I do, I was looking at the Ice House and I just wanted to know if someone can share with me the comparison of the height of that apartment building compared to that Ice House, Ice House alongside the tracks there.
I think the applicant can answer that. Pretty similar.
Invited our architect and he had a personal engagement, but my understanding is about the same. Somewhere around, I think, 40 to 50 feet, I think, is kind of the average of what those are, so they'd be similar. It's a very expansive Ice House building.
And now my question is, may I ask why the developers felt like, feel as if that is a viable area for apartments along the tracks like that?
Sure. You know, again, we looked at the master plan and that's what we sort of read into it. We just feel that this area, you've mentioned sprucing up, we think this is a way to kind of bring some uses in there that will do that to the site. We think there would be demand for residential in there. You know, Councilman Pollock had mentioned that we're more than willing to, more than happy to put in some language in the lease agreement, so they'll understand. They're going to understand what this area is and we're very confident in it. We're investing a lot of money into this. So, you know, we're, we believe in it, we're going to invest in it, we think that there's definitely going to be demand there for market rate, particularly the type of workforce housing that we're proposing. These aren't large, you know, three-bedroom, you know, condo style. These are, you know, relatively small studio and one-bedroom units in an area where I think people, you know, have jobs and want to live with a mixed use. We think Urban Rest being there, we think the coffee shop being there, we think what Dennis is going to do, the Ice House building, will create a there, there. And that's, that's why we're so bullish on it.
And I, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I should.
Dennis Griffin with Connected Companies. To expand a little bit further on the housing in a, call it a location like this, unfortunately, it's becoming a necessity to look at all spaces for housing. And our approach, my business approach, is to preserve buildings. The buildings that we've preserved in the area, was the old E-Prize building, for instance, we, we had a very strong shell over at the tracks in Pleasant Ridge and converted that building, which was pretty much as ugly as some of the pictures here, but it was a solid building that became Pulse Fitness. We converted where Urban Rest is, that was vacant, but it had strong bones. So we have Urban Rest in there, we have, we moved a manufacturer in, who embraces this use very, very much, Ross Controls, they're roughly 25,000 square feet and they have 50 employees. They moved here because of this use and they're like, Dennis and your team continue to make these changes because it's attractive for themselves and their tenants. In Grand Rapids, in Plymouth, in Royal Oak early, we went to these industrial areas to make kind of unique living experiences, but organically affordable and oftentimes because they're brownfield sites, some of those incentives can be passed back on to the clients. I am not a high-rent developer, but I'm proud of our tenants and our clients. You know, I've said it in front of Planning Commission, they're warriors. Drifter, Urban Rest, Farm Field Table, Star Treks, Carlos Bakery, Hilton Collective, these are all small businesses and most of those buildings, you know, we were able to save. This one, you know, there's not much we can do. But there is a unique demand for housing, not unique, a pervasive demand for housing. There's a pervasive demand for housing that's not 2,500 or 3,000 or $1,900 and some of that comes with size and some of it comes with location. People can't afford to build or live in oftentimes, unfortunately, a new apartment building, even in industrial area in Royal Oak. Part of the discussion and part of the way this team came together is we're going to hit organic affordability and if we, through even some of the other initiatives with the city, if we go through a brownfield process with you, we're mandated to have affordability component here and we will do that. So housing fits here and I totally understand the comments from the neighbors. I understand them and appreciate them. I respectfully disagree because we have buildings there. I go back and check that building all the time. The road is not plugged up constantly. There are instances where there are trucks and there are forklifts. I embrace that and I embrace, you know, any type of manufacturing and construction, but we also have three, four other ways in and out of this complex. People are smart. They're not going to walk their dogs next to a forklift. They're going to walk their dogs into, you know, more passive places. And the area is very active, even when I was pulling over today. People are running, walking their dogs, enjoying that space. Over time, it has become more vibrant and that's really kind of, you know, not just a trend, it's a reality. People in industrial areas across the world have taken these areas and made them very unique. They enjoy them. So if we can make unique spaces and have them be affordable, I like to use hyperlocal. The largest corporation we have is Ross Controls, but their original Ferndale Corporation, they're very proud to come back and they're very happy to be here because they're getting great workers from this immediate area, from Ferndale, from Hazel Park, Detroit, from Oak Park. So I hope that answers your, your question.
May I continue?
Sure.
Okay. So I just want to point out that many years ago, I was involved with the school board's decision to make the affordable housing at the Jefferson project. That was through, I believe Robertson Brothers had something to do with that, the Jefferson project that's right outside of Ferndale, in Oak Park. Affordable housing?
Different developer.
Okay, okay, never mind. Okay. All right. But you, but you're the, over by the, the other school buildings.
Tap school, listen in town.
So my question is, first I want to say, I love, I think that, that Ice House is, to be able to repurpose it into something that can be used in the community is a wonderful idea and I love the beauty and the creativity that you have around it. My question is, is that I noticed that when speaking about affordable, I didn't see anything regarding it being affordable, even in the steps you pointed, pointed out, I believe there was a listing that you pointed out that were, that kind of shared what would be feasible.
I think we hopefully answered that.
But my question is to you is that, so we're coming in, you want to make that market rate at organic affordability, whatever that means, and also I see nothing regarding any type of like accessibility or inclusion in, in that, that development. So that's kind of where I'm having a problem. I love the development, but I see that it's, market rate housing is something we have plenty of here already. And I'd like to know why we're not considering something different.
Sure. So there's different programs that we're, I'm sure all aware of, heard of. The first program for affordability is a Lytech program, low-income housing tax credits. This location doesn't pass the Walk Score test. That's a, it's a very competitive environment. So when we call in for the Lytech, it's just, matter of fact, don't waste your time, there's other competitive spaces that are going to get the score. The process and I'll call it the mandate from Ferndale is if you get brownfield, you earn brownfield incentives, then you have a dictated percentage of affordability in your project. We can't talk to the brownfield board until we get site plan approval. It's kind of a quirk, maybe something to consider, you know, addressing over time. So, but if we get brownfield incentives here, which we're going to specifically apply for because it's, it's a core city, a brownfield development, then the affordability comes in with that. Outside of it, the only thing we can do is, organic affordability goes with your construction design, with your land input costs, can you share infrastructure? We have shared infrastructure with the Ice House and others, so that can bring some costs down. In terms of, that's the attainability. The accessibility, we specifically have four floors and the first floor units are all accessible at grade. So 25% of our units, you don't have to, you know, dress through elevators, you're coming in at grade. So that's something that we're very proud of. And then I know Roger can, can add more to it, but our commitment is, through Brownfield Awards, we will have the percent, required percentage of affordability and maybe even more in this project.
Thank you. I would like to open it up to other people, too.
Okay, all right. Okay. I can, I can add when the time comes to that as well. I'll touch a break, some share on that as well.
Okay.
Through the, through the chair, I guess sort of piggybacking off of some of the things that have already been discussed. I guess can you, can you talk a little bit about, you know, why is it that the residential is kind of pulled so far south as opposed to pulling it away from the industrial buildings that are still being used?
Yep.
And then I'll add a second one in case these kind of dovetail together. You know, I read, I read the traffic study, there, you know, I find traffic studies a little, I don't know, not, not user-friendly. So, and Roger, maybe this is a better question for you since you're not, you know, you don't gain anything from this passing because you're city staff. Maybe you could break it down in layman's terms a little bit, you know, how traffic impact studies are supposed to work, what you glean from this one? Because I think, you know, by looking at Google Maps, like someone suggested, East Drayton and Myrtle Street do look very congested and it's hard to visualize what it's going to, what it could look like if this proceeds. So just to recap, residential pulled really far south, why was that? And can we, in layman's terms, talk about traffic impacts?
Yeah. Our preference would have clearly been to have the, the housing shifted north and it doesn't show up, bless you, it doesn't show up on this sheet and maybe you can see it on your screen in yellow. You see the dash lines that are flowing through there? Those are all existing permanent DTE easements, which in a DTE easement area, you can have ground improvements, parking, but you can't have structures. So we, literally, that's a no-build zone. So our, our building was, was moved back.
That for clarification?
Sure.
That would, a red dash, yeah.
That and then that whole area where your hand is and to the tracks is an entire easement. It's a hundred-foot deep easement. So I wish you could see that.
Council, councilwoman, it shows yellow up on the TVs but not the screen?
Sorry.
No, just what?
I'm just trying to make sure I understand what we're talking about.
Yeah.
All yellow. That takes it out. Then you have these easements coming down.
Then you have these easements coming down.
So, that was, it's honestly, we would love to be able to shift the building north. It's a no-go with their contracts with DT. And to think, on the traffic, I agree with you on the technicalities of it. The parking part of it is, we want it, even some of the comments we heard earlier, this site is self-parked in this location, which is, which is really great. We have the location, the space for it, and we want it to be activated. We want it, you know, to be a multi-generational binder, where people will be driving in, biking in, walking in. When we bought 2615 Walcott, before Urban Rest was there, and your roadwork had not been done with the sidewalks and the bike lanes. Most people thought you couldn't even go into that area, you know, they thought it was one full company. But the amount of traffic, foot traffic and pedestrian traffic, rolling in to those areas is incredible. It's really a beautiful thing to see. So, and we're there as investors, and we don't keep all of our buildings. We like to find ways to, when it's appropriate, we sell back the building's backyard to our tenants when we can. And, you know, we just want to keep, you know, making spaces. And I go back to, even with the housing, we believe in keeping weight off from the shoulders of our tenants, whether they're residential or commercial, there's just too much stress economically out there. And going back to some of the other comments, where my wife and I, we live in Pleasant Ridge, on Cambridge, which is Woodward Heights, so we're very close. We're back there all the time. Our office is at 2300, right in the neighborhood, so we're there all the time. And, you know, it's, it can be busy, but it's also very peaceful at the same time in that whole area. The traffic study, that's for Roger.
Through the chair. Can I make a clarification for, or some additional information for Counselwoman?
Can you go back to the other one?
Are we still on? No, can you go back to the other one? So, you're probably wondering, because I know you were talking about can the building be moved up. But if you notice, this is a street, and I believe this is being reserved for emergency vehicles. I'm right through. So, if you were to shift this over to just before this line, you're then breaking up this emergency road. Because those are some of the things that we also look at in the Planning Commission as to why some things can't be done.
So, I could address the traffic study concern. So, I read the traffic study from front to back, but it was six months ago, so I'm going to go off of both memory and just logic on dealing with traffic studies. So, from memory, the traffic study has to disperse traffic, you know, out the various exits, and it looks at what those exits are, what is the route they're going to go, what is the quickest way. So, if you're going west on Ward Heights, you're not going to come down Drayton here or Myrtle and then wait to go up to Hilton and then come back. You're going to go to the quickest route you can find, which will be right here. So, I don't remember the number, but some large percentage, 95% of the truck traffic will be at Woodward Heights, going west or going east. Very little traffic, to my remembrance, is coming off of Drayton or Myrtle. So, what I saw by the traffic study and my experience is, what this provides, Myrtle and Drayton specifically, is if a semi is here, they can actually get out. Today, they can't get out through this property. But you can see how it kind of does a little bulb out. This is because they overlaid a template, a semi template, and a vehicle from Drayton could come out here, go up, and come out toward Heights. Now, they don't probably want a lot of traffic coming out of there, but I think these two entrances provide access for these businesses to actually leave versus these people coming eastbound. Now, I think one of the things I could probably agree to is, as a banquet hall, if that was in use and everybody's leaving at the same time, then I could see more people coming out this way. There was a mention of sidewalks. There are, I think, very few, if any, sidewalks on Myrtle or Drayton. And I can go to Google Maps and show it if you'd like, but they're correct. And I don't think Myrtle or Drayton is where people would be attracted to going for a walk. More likely, they're going to be going downward Heights, circling the site around the greenery, around the building, coming back up. So, I hope that answers the traffic study. I can give, I can look it up quickly and give more perspective there. I will just go back to a couple of things. ADA, the entire site will be ADA compliant with crosswalks and all the appropriate improvements, along with, as the developer said, the first floor will be zero-step entry, so you have 25% of the units being accessible. And then, the last important thing is affordability. So, our affordability policy states, if we give an incentive or we give land, you have to do affordable housing. But we don't have a requirement for affordable housing if it's a market rate project. I've talked with the developer. I am 98, 99% confident they will need an incentive from the city. So, at that point, as we went through the incentive for 141, is where we will require looking at what their gap is, and the state MEDC will for Brownfields, we'll be looking at affordable housing, barrier-free units throughout the project, and a variety of other things. I will point out, this is technically a rezoning from M1 to MXD2. And the only reason is because M1 allows you to do residential, upper floor. It is a special use review, I think, so they would need a review for that. But in the industrial district, they could do upper-floor residential. They want to do first-floor residential, and that is not allowed in M1. So, technically, they have to rezone to MXD2 to do first-floor residential, or they could just do the residential in theory with a special use review. The PUD, they have, I think, three PUD requests, I can have Kyle pull them, but they are minor requests. So, they don't have a large request, like where they normally would have a 20-foot-in-height limit, and they want to go to 50 feet, and that would trigger, well, under all requests, the 12-PUD criteria are triggered. But, you know, if they wanted to do, instead of a 15-foot setback from the parking lot, 14.5, you know, you're talking six inches. Yes, it triggers the PUD criteria, but they're very, very small requests. So, you know, they could have stayed MXD2, they probably could have worked on, the PUD, I think one of the examples is that the entrance here has to be 24 feet, and it's 20 feet or something, 20 feet, six inches, I can give you a list, but it's already built. So, technically, it's a PUD request, but it's already existing. So, this is just a really weird site where it forced into rezoning, and technically, to clear up some things, we did a PUD. Absent the PUD, you know, there wouldn't be much, absent the PUD and rezoning, it really just would be a special use review for upper-story residential and would lack all the other requests.
Thank you. Hey, do you have a question?
Yes, I figured you do. Go ahead, Counselwoman.
Thank you. My question is about noise, and it centers squarely on the two business owners that we have here today. Could we? Okay, so this is still up. This section, if I'm understanding correctly, that section is the M1 light industrial section still, correct? And then, this section would be? Section, is that correct?
So, this line right here.
That's the line?
Is what's being rezoned.
Actually, oh, okay.
So, this is now the MXD2, and this is the M1, the east.
So, when I look at our noise ordinance and our maximum permissible sound levels, within the industrial section, the maximum nighttime and daytime sea-weighted sound level, decibel limit, is 90 decibels. Within the mixed-use area, it is 70 decibels, nighttime use. In order to get to that 70, I had to do a calculation, so bear with me. The size of an acceptable buffer zone to reduce the noise level is about a distance of at least 100 feet between the noise source and the receiver to reduce approximately 10 decibels of sound pressure level. So, to get down to the 70-decibel level, a buffer zone of approximately 1,000 feet or 300 meters needs to be required. Do we have that distance available between those two sections?
No, the distance between, so I don't know what you're referencing, although I can imagine, there was some website that you could calculate distance and those things. No, it's a tighter fit here, but I would say it also exists, if this could be used by right as industrial, you could have industrial here and you have residential right across the street. So, it is a tough one, all over town where industrial is next to residential and next to commercial. So, I would answer your question by saying, no, if that's the distance required, it doesn't have that. But it wouldn't be any different if by right, they could build an industrial building here, make an excessive amount of noise, and then the neighbors across the street wouldn't have too much.
Will we?
Ms. Dab can want to answer.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Just to add, I mean, first of all, obviously, the renters here will, they're looking for an authentic type of, you know, experience. But I want to point out, there will be sound attenuating glass. It's going to be very important to us. The building, as you can see it, there was a lot of brick. It's a very, you know, beefy type of building. So, just by nature of what we're using for materials is going to reduce that quite a bit.
Okay. And that's, again, the line of questioning is not, it's not a slight on your design because everything that you presented is phenomenal. My line of questioning really is associated with what kind of burden we are going to face as a council, what kind of burden our police force is going to face, our code enforcement, when we have this clash between people who have a certain decibel allowance for their zoned area versus another zoned area, and they're touching, and the sound doesn't care about that property line or that zoning line. So, I do worry about that potential conflict, and I'm not sure how we would go about enforcing or measuring.
Or amending it.
Right.
Right.
Through the chair. And I understand your point, Counselwoman. I would remind you that directly on the north side of Woodward Heights is all residential. And there was new construction condos that were built. So, people moving into them knew they were moving into a border of an industrial area. And that's our one, which is probably lower decibel requirement.
Let's find out.
Yes, but I want to debate this. I'm going to hold off because we're still in questions, but we're going to, I'm going to pin that. Not to, I got to follow my own steps here. I know, do you have any other questions, Counselwoman? No, that was, that was my question.
Why don't we slate that for when we pass a motion and discuss that? Though, if there are amendments that you would like to suggest, I suggest you indicate that you would like to do that before we make the motion, because I have a couple suggestions. And I have more questions, I have questions, too. But I want to make sure all of you get your questions asked.
Through the chair, I'm going to do my best to remember Reed's questions so that they get answered. I think the first one was for the applicant asking for additional information about the solar-covered carport and whether there's opportunity for expanding that. And then, I think the second question was probably for Roger, having to do with, you know, is there talk of additional nearby development that would dovetail with this one? I hope I got the essence of those, Reed.
So, I'm not a solar expert, and I don't think anybody on our team is. Again, our architect's not here, but from a size standpoint, I just kind of did the math. It's 15 spaces, you know, each space is about 10 feet wide, 150 to 20 feet deep, so about 3,000 square feet. You know, we're, I think we're trying to create an element that will be usable. You know, will we look at some other options? Yes, but certainly, we can't commit to something. We've come a long way with this plan, and this is what our plan is. So, we think it's sufficient of what we're showing. Certainly, I'll give my card to the gentleman back there and have more conversations, but, you know, we think it's about 3,000 square feet.
I can add to solar, which is, 15 years ago, we just couldn't do it. I mean, it just, it would cripple a project, especially with our business approach. Today, we're embracing it. We're doing a large project in Grand Rapids right now. We found through the Inflation Reduction Act, there's actually help for solar. So, we'll definitely explore that. We have a consultant, and they've made it, you know, you should be exploring it anyway, but there's ways to incorporate through PACE programs or through Inflation Reduction Act. There's some, really some additional nuances for solar that we're learning, clearly not the expert that the resident is, but using white roofs and getting reflection off from the roof and the bottom of the solar panels, those are things that we can explore. And as the buildings head towards all-electric, we'll continue to evaluate solar. That was one that we know definitively we want to do, but to explore more, we will continue to do that. That's our commitment.
I could add one thing from perspective from Colorado. It's hard to do solar when you have apartments because each unit is individually metered for electrical. And so, if you're generating a bunch of power out there, you can't just give it to one unit or two units, you can't share it. So, the power generated, they usually do some math to figure out the common spaces, you know, the parking lot lights, maybe the amenities interior, like the fitness center and the hallways. But you can't have wires crossing because you don't know if something's turned off, someone gets electrocuted. So, generating, you know, solar for apartments that are individually metered becomes really difficult. Also, it becomes difficult if they're condo, because then you have property descriptions, and you can't be passing power across off-site because then it becomes more difficult to track, and that's where people get hurt. So, just perspective. You had another question about, I'm sorry.
I think the question was, other adjacent or nearby, underutilized or empty industrial properties, might this project have an impact in doing something on those?
So, to the northwest, there's the vacant property, the green space along the road tracks to the west, and then you have Iron Ridge happening right now, and then there's a couple triangle pieces, if you know, when you're going up Bermuda, that development's happening. Absent that, I don't know of any other residential coming into the area or any other industrial coming into the area.
There are two other parcels that we own that we would like to activate into additional, likely residential. Directly north of us, at the intersection of Portland and Woodward Heights, is that small lot in the corner. And then, recently, we purchased a vacant parking lot from Mr. Leonard at the southwest corner of Woodward Heights and Gainesboro, which is zoned, I believe, mixed-use now. So, we're exploring both of those for additional development. And Mr. Leonard mentioned the former Reichhold site that he owns, his four acres along the tracks. We're in discussions of what could be appropriate use there. Nothing's set in stone, but it is, you know, cascading to these smaller parcels that you've seen even on Woodward Heights. And going back to another proximity instance, I think is important to note, I was the original owner of Iron Ridge, we sold to our partners, but we worked with the city to rezone from parking. Everything on the east side of Bermuda was zoned parking. We zoned it R3, and everything immediately on the other side is M1. So, those apartments are being constructed right now, and the last use there was a group that was making, you know, containers for fire protection, a similar type of use, a major investment, some Brownfield investment. So, those proximities are, I think they're going to continue. So, hopefully, that answers your questions on some of the other pockets of land immediately area.
May I through the chair?
Sure.
Usually with projects like this, sometimes, I believe I listened to the Planning Commission, the first Planning Commission, when this kind of came forth, and really liked what I've heard. And from what I was hearing, it sounds like you came back with a revision of the plan. So, may I ask?
So may I ask, what was that area going to be? Was it always going to be apartments, or was something else considered before coming to the apartment?
No, it was apartments, pretty much the same plan, but it missed a lot of the storm warning tension. It had no commercial at the end of the residential apartment building. The green space wasn't highlighted. They did not address the activation space north of the ice house or the turnaround. So I think I can speak, and I think Councilor Pollock would speak. The first rendition was ho-hum. It was just...
It wasn't very impressive. I would also add that the first rendition had the residential much closer to Woodward, but at that time, they didn't know where the easements were. And it wasn't until it was brought back to us in March...
It was probably during the discussion.
That's where it moved down because of the identification of the...
It was probably during the discussion, which I was not here at that point.
Last March. Last March.
Yeah, we had come in, if you recall, we'd come in with a concept discussion before we actually formally submitted.
Oh, that's right.
That's probably where you're thinking of that.
That's what I'm thinking of, yes.
I think it was October, kind of the same configuration. We did reorient the parking lot quite a bit. That was kind of an issue to get that connectivity for just, not only for the pedestrian, for the trucks, but, you know, just overall more cohesive parking lot. That has come a long way, so that's the difference as well.
Yeah, and I will say that the design of the parking lot to include that walkway is a thousand times better because originally, they had this kind of, you know, strolling kind of path where like, people are going to get hit by cars. So then they came up with this nice promenade, which I think is fantastic. Oh, was it?
I have one more question there.
Sure.
Considering what you just said, people strolling, so just across the way, and I don't know the distance, but there are residential right across the road from this development. Do we know that distance? Because I just, would noise be a factor or anything? Was it a factor? Maybe it doesn't matter. People live there right now. But just, do we know that distance from the development and the businesses across the way from that residential?
We can measure it.
It's basically the right-of-way of Woodward Heights. There's one industrial building there tucked between Irving and Paxton, Inman and Paxton.
So if we measure from here to there, it's about 100 feet, that's to the front of the, if we're talking this residential.
Roger, you need to give us a class on how to do that.
All right. Right-click, measure. So that distance, if you want another distance, I can give it to you, but that's about 96 feet or something to the face of the residential, looks like.
If you don't mind, I'm going to ask my question. I know that the edge, the LLC between the apartment and the banquet center, right? My question is, what entity or who is responsible for managing the public space of activities and maintaining all of the placemaking that you've identified?
That's a good question. So there'll be a master association, if you will, that would be responsible for maintaining all of that, and then the different components would, you know, contribute to that. So there would be one entity, and, you know, that would be partnership, which would be the master for the entire site.
Want to answer that?
Are rents included as part of contributing to that maintenance of that space?
Yes, they are, yes.
So I noticed as part of the, I think it was the site plan or PUD, I can't remember which, there's so many documents, but about recycling and waste enclosures, it says adequate waste recycling enclosures. I'm not so concerned about the enclosures. I'm concerned about recycling. We're trying to do more recycling in our multifamily housing as well as do more composting. And so I was wondering if the planning commission had brought that up as how are we going to fulfill that here in your multifamily unit?
So I don't think we've addressed it fully to answer your question on that. I mean, it's something we're certainly, we'll address as far as recycling. You're talking recycling specifically in the rental.
Yeah, so we have a great recycling program for single-family homes, but not so great recycling for multifamily apartment units, and we have residents who live in those units asking for better recycling services. And a lot of that is on the city side, I think, with the landlords. But I was wondering how we can incorporate this into this PUD and requirement so that recycling is part of your facility for people living there? And we are doing composting, maybe not for your apartment building to start right away, but perhaps for the banquet hall?
Now, our sole existing tenant, she'll demand it, Aleah from Drifter.
Well, yes, I totally recognize that, but how do we...
Just a little adjust. But the apartment building specifically has a refuse and recycling center in the south corner of the building, and our residents there will demand it. It'll be a part of our management program. We'll have professional managed building. Our clients, we want to get ahead of our clients in terms of that. In terms of the food hall and the banquet center, we haven't thought through that, but we definitely can make best practices in terms of recycling. We embrace it, and we just haven't, you know, put a specific thought to that.
Okay, well, I'm also interested in the composting. We have a lot of businesses who are piloting out composting. Your project hits on so many of the sustainability, climate action, you know, goals we're trying to achieve collectively as a community. I would like to see how this is incorporated as part of the project. I don't know if it requires an amendment of a document here or where we would insert that as something to be more than adequate waste recycling enclosures.
Right. And if there's a way to incorporate that in the language, we're open to that. I think the other part of it is just the direction, as Councilman Pollock had mentioned, everything is going above and beyond requirement across the board. So I would imagine that every one of those, if we would commit that those areas would be through trust or through documentation, that we will continue to do that through the theme throughout. We can't deliver a project like this and have a major miss of not recycling appropriately. It would be, you know, people would revolt, and it's just, we would not want that to happen.
So in a land far, far away where I may have come from, we could not require that. I don't know if Dan has any comments on that. What we could do is set them up to be able to by making the trash enclosure the adequate size. That's probably where Claire was coming from.
Okay.
But I do think during the incentive, and maybe Dan wants to comment on if we can make them recycle or compost or if they're willing to, but absolutely through the incentive is where...
Brownfield would be the appropriate channel?
I think that would be better if they wanted incentive from staff, but maybe Dan can comment on PUD versus...
Chair, I mean, one of the items, second motion, is consideration of a planned PUD. There are, in the draft motion, five current conditions that are referenced. Generally, there could be a potential amendment to that. It's always dangerous doing an amendment to that at the table.
Yeah, I realize that.
The developer may not agree to the proposal.
Yeah.
Should the three motions be approved, it would go back to the site plan. It could be explored as to whether, you've heard a certain level of commitment from the developer.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate riffing on the options at the dais. I think requiring it in the PUD while other apartment complexes are not yet there yet, but forcing them to do it through the PUD is a little unfair, given where we are at the beginning of this program. But I would see it as continuing conversation through the incentive process, and that's where I would seek how to make that work rather than trying to amend the PUD here. So I was looking for a way to figure out where do we do that. My next question is about, we have a lot of new housing units being proposed for studios and one-bedroom apartments, and we don't have a lot of two-bedroom apartments being built, so single parents with a child aren't, have accessible housing through some of these new developments. So I'm looking at understanding your market decision not to do two-bedroom apartments.
Part of it's geometry of the building. It's a very narrow building to tuck it away as far as we can. The other part is the situs of the building. This is, again, no pun intended, an edge to your site. It's not necessarily family style to us. It's just not the direction we're heading with it. This is meant for that, really, the Ferndale resident or the regional resident that's getting kind of moved out of town. We think that a lot of those people, it's not the families, as you mentioned, but a lot of other folks are getting moved out, and we think we can give them an alternative that they can stay here.
So this is more attainable and workforce housing for some of the target demographics that we're trying to alleviate pressure.
No question.
For our young workers just out of college.
Seniors.
And/or seniors, yeah. If I go through the inclusive housing plan of our target people of housing, that's who I'm thinking of. But generally, outside of your project, I'm thinking that way, on new projects, when new developments are being proposed. So we are trying to be family-friendly here, and a lot of our new stuff is for single people. That's needed too, but we need the others as well. Thank you for that explanation. I think those were my only two questions. A lot of you asked my questions as well, so thanks for, I won't repeat them. So that, if we need a motion to proceed...
Mayor?
Or do you have an amendment question?
I was going to start with the first motion and suggest that we go one by one.
Sure.
Because they are discreet, and it's easy to wrap additional issues in.
Oh, I did have one more thing before we proceed. Councilwoman McColsky is right that the noise levels, if someone called now and complained, our police department would have to respond based off of the decibel levels with a reading meter. So she's identified a conflict in the policy that could be in practice. Do you know what I mean?
Through the chair, the ordinance provides that reading is from the, the level that's applied is where it's received. The noise is measured, so it would be the complaining property typically is where the measurement would arrive from. And it's the, it's the level that is prescribed for that particular property where measured. So for this proposed site, if the conditional rezoning goes through, it would have the, with respect to the C-weighted, it would have the, during the daytime, 80 C-weighted decibel level and 70 for nighttime at the C-weighted. That's just the way the ordinance reads.
Okay.
So I'm not sure if that answers your question, but that's what the ordinance...
I'm having trouble wrapping my brain around that answer in relation to real-life activity, real-life scenarios that potentially could happen. And what my interpretation of what Councilwoman McColsky is saying is, this could potentially be a conflict. How do we get ahead of it? How do we make sure that the residents who move in fully understand and that if they do call the police with a complaint, that this doesn't trigger something that we've tried to resolve here because we knew this was an edge project aptly named, right?
You know, I don't know if there was any draft measurements taken or with respect to the property. This is the threshold, this is the maximum threshold.
Okay.
I don't know what exists either at the abutting property currently or on-site. That might have been helpful to have, but that's not here.
I don't think it's going to be, it's not a showstopper, but it does need to be continued to look at after, you know, council decides what to do. So it is a concern. I think council is hearing quite a bit about noise. I am particularly sensitive to it since I worked on the first noise ordinance in 2010 and '11. So it is something that we need to address in some manner. Because we do have other businesses who are near apartment living, and I would say still causing conflict with noise, but it's under the decibel allowable limits. So that is my comment. I'm going to pin it here.
Can I just seek clarification, just in very straightforward terms? Are we essentially acknowledging that a permitted noise on, made, emanating from an industrial site that would be within the permissible levels on the site of...
Origin.
Of origin? If it doesn't disperse within the area from the site of origin to the differently zoned adjacent property, it could then become a violation just by transmitting across...
Correct.
Across space. That's the conundrum that we're faced with here. Yeah?
Yeah.
The chair, yes, that's the way the ordinance is currently articulated and set for.
So all the residents, sorry, through the chair, so all the residents north on Woodward Heights could be making noise complaints every day...
If it exceeds it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but, you know, we've had a resident in our downtown that would constantly call our police department because patio noise was too loud, and every time they would come out and measure it, there was within the allowable limits. And that person just continually forced our police department to measure weekend after weekend. We're not having that issue now on Woodward Heights.
So through the chair, and I don't mean to turn this into a debate, but we have two business owners that have a 24-hour business, and that is a very heavy industrial business, the Spray Tech and the Iron Works. It's very loud, and I know that because I've gone over there sometimes at night because I'm a creep, and that's what I do. So I don't think, I don't think that the businesses that you're referencing that are to the north, I don't think they have that same schedule nor that same industrial level, if that makes any sense.
Yes. My concern is what I've heard from the two business owners of Spray Tech and Jefferson Iron Works. They have said they're 24-hour businesses, and the developer is putting in sound materials like a hotel, I'm assuming, right? When you're a hotel and you can't hear the highway when you out your hotel window. I don't know if you're going to be at that level, but that's my expectation to some degree. That if someone called, that Spray Tech isn't going to have to deal with, you know, quieting their forklift when that's not possible because there's this clash here. There's, the solution tonight is not through this PUD and approvals of this, but I think there is ongoing conversation where conflict could happen because we, as council members, get pulled into these scenarios by residents who feel like they're not getting relief through the noise ordinance. It's an ancillary outcome from this piloting, or not piloting, but, you know, doing something different and unique from this, which just puts pressure on another regulation. We are expressing concerns, and I know Councilman Pollock asked for in your lease agreement, which we've done with others, but it's so critical because people need to know what they're signing up for, and Spray Tech shouldn't... People need to know what they're signing up for, and Spray Tech should, and Jefferson Iron Works should not have to deal with any of these complaints because they were there first, and this is their business model, and that's not going to change.
Yeah, I think that's, that's absolutely appropriate. And if it's a recommend, not just a recommendation, we would want that. We would want in our lease agreements, you know, caveat emptor, this is, this is the location that you're choosing to be. And I think it's something we have to consider. You know, there's other buildings in the area. I think that over time, there are going to be second-story, you know, lobster homes built on top of these single-story buildings. I think it's going to be great. So all of those are going to be those, those conflicts. So that's a great best practice to, to just announce it to the world, this is what you're bumping into. They can see the tracks, they know that there's going to be a train, there's going to be no horn, that's a great thing, but there's still bells and other things we've talked about, but the rest of it. It was, put it right in there in the contract, respect your neighbors and understand it's an industrial building, that's what makes the world go around, and you're choosing to live here. I think that we would embrace that type of commitment in any type of document.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that because if you don't, what will happen is your council members will be pulled into problem-solving this issue that is relevantly never going to be fixed because they're industrial business owners.
Let's just, let's just not tell everybody about the rule because we don't have anybody calling in.
I don't, I don't want to intervene, and I will be asked to intervene, and so will other council people. And so we're asking this to be mitigated, even though this policy that Councilwoman McColsky brought up is not on the table tonight to be addressed, but it needs to be looked at in some manner to make sure a conflict is not going to be bumped into when someone calls the police, and they have to respond because police respond when someone is called, when they are called.
The best we can do for conflict resolution, it makes perfect sense.
Okay.
Through the chair...
You don't want us calling you about this issue.
Now, I have three things. I have three things now. First, I'm going to ask these of Roger. Where'd Roger go? Why did you get comfortable? You're not done. So in our packet, this has to do with the motions that were offered to us. In our packet, some of the motions that were made don't directly mimic the motions that were originally provided at the planning commission. For example, the conditional rezoning that you've provided doesn't have the six findings that were in the planning commission. Is there a reason for that?
Dan, is that what you...
Through the chair, the city manager had requested that I assist in crafting those motions. For the PUD agreement, those findings aren't expressly required as part of council's deliberations and decision-making process, should it elect to approve the motion.
Yeah, but these were required at the planning commission, so...
Planning commission motions didn't pass.
I know. So if we want to duplicate what...
Those are findings.
Yes.
Not conditions.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Okay.
So if...
And then my, sorry, did you have a question on that?
Does it, if by passing this motion, does it address your concerns that you just raised with the findings?
Yes. Yeah. It's, and I, I got confused. This is what happens to me in planning commission too. I get confused on things. So I was, I was thinking that the findings were required as part of the motion, but it's not.
Okay, great. Thank you. I just want your confusion to spur more confusion among others.
Nope, nope.
If I may, through the chair, have one more question, and this is probably through council, Attorney Chris. Looking at all three of the motions here, and I'm looking particularly at motion number three that says, the, this one is saying that the special land use application would be for banquet hall use for 700, 800 Woodward Heights being parcels with Sidwell numbers listed based on plans dated March 28th and so forth. But my question is, if motion one doesn't pass, and I need to hear this from you, would motion three still be viable?
Through the chair...
As a banquet hall?
The, if, motion one addresses the conditional rezoning of the property. Motion three is the proposed special land use which would allow for the banquet hall utilization at the Ice House. And it seems, although that if council elected not to approve the conditional rezoning, that it may not wish to consider the motion three with respect to the banquet use, although I suppose it could, but, but the conditional rezoning to allow mixed use would not have You understand that issue?
I do.
Council and Leaks May, what is your concern?
Well, my concern is probably what my concern always is. I'm, I'm hearing, so I, I feel like we're kind of going backwards, and this is kind of bringing me back to what, you know, other conversations we had regarding a housing unit that has been approved already on Vester. With there being a percentage of Brownfield being a consideration, and we having affordable housing, and we have something that's accessible, it doesn't sound like it's set in stone. So if we go, if we say yes for the rezoning, we pretty much said it's going, everything's going as it is, and we could either have it or we could not have it. And that's what I'm having, and I'm talking about affordable housing, I'm talking about accessibility, and that's where I'm having a problem.
That this doesn't have affordable units in it?
And accessibility, that, and when I see accessibility, I'm not just talking about something on one level floor. I'm saying, these look like they're going to be studio apartments, so could, say, a wheelchair get through these doors? Have we taken these into consideration? I, I feel like we're just kind of going through this without really considering what accessibility really is and what affordability could mean, particularly even over in that area. I, I'm having a problem with this.
Yeah.
I love the idea of what can, how we can develop there. I've been there, and I've seen that it needs something. It does.
The developer has committed to going through the Brownfield incentive...
No, he hasn't.
...process. Roger?
I, I...
Has, has the developer agreed to go through the Brownfield process?
No. Not agreed to, has insisted...
But wants to?
Yes.
The developer wants to go through the Brownfield process.
Hundred percent.
So we, we put in place, after the James, as a history reminder, we put in place before Roger's arrival, the St. James Project was given city incentives to restore the, oh, I'm going to get the name wrong, not the covenant. What was the second, secondary building? Not the main building.
It was the school.
It was, no, it was, it was the convent.
It was the convent.
The nunnery.
The nunnery, to make those into living units, to restore the building. And the city council, through the Brownfield Committee, agreed to give them Brownfield credits to restore the building. Then they sold the property to a new architect, a new developer, new architect, and they said they couldn't do it because we already gave them the Brownfield and they were approved. They tore down the building. So this is called the St. James Rule. In that, developers can't get incentives and then change course because they are not living up to what the city wanted. So we got kind of screwed there, sorry. So while you saw it as a quirk, we see it as protecting our assets and value of investment in development projects. So, sorry.
I understand the genesis of it, but without the Brownfields, you know, we're going to, we're going to ask for the Brownfield. It's necessary in this environment. So as soon as we ask and we're in the discussion of affordability, there's no way around it.
Yeah.
So that puts us right there.
But let me, let me, do you mind if I take a moment to help you walk through this?
Sure.
So your interest is in affordability. We all are too, because this is step one. They have to get this approved tonight. They're committed to the Brownfield. If they don't get the Brownfield incentive, they can't do affordable units.
Right.
Right? So that is where we will negotiate through that committee, which you are on the incentive committee, and have the ability to direct that they, how much the city gives versus what they're asking for, the community benefits with that, and that's where you can also negotiate, as you have done before, with the Vester project on your barrier-free accessible units, which is something I think we are interested in doing as part of that process forwarding.
Yeah, and the entire building is accessible. It's an elevator building.
It's more than that.
Right.
Understood.
We have a Ferndale Inclusion and Accessible, like I always get it, Ferndale Accessible and Inclusion Commission, and they are looking for more barrier-free units built as part of this development.
Kitchens that are wheelchair-friendly to that level.
Yeah. So that is something that will be, heads up, will be requested through the Brownfield incentive process.
Yeah, we're, we embrace a Brownfield process, and we understand the flow of funds in negotiating, you know, how we can do it the best together. It's just, to us, it's logical and...
Through the chair, I have a question going a step further. Can you even do this project without the Brownfield dollars?
Unlikely.
That's what I kind of feel.
No.
Is that it's not, I mean, the Brownfield isn't, you're not relying on the affordability housing just to get the Brownfield dollars. You need that money in order to really do the project as it's being presented.
So if I may, through the chair, then why wasn't that brought up? And, and why isn't that listed here? We're going to need Brownfield.
We were asked specifically to stay away from the Brownfield discussion because it's, we've said it from original planning commission meetings, we're intending to, to do Brownfield. To us, it's as logical as going to be, but that's that kind of the chicken and egg thing about the Brownfield discussion for our approval. To us, engage with the Brownfield, we need site plan. Otherwise, it's all just conjecture.
Yep. I understand, and this is understanding the development process, which is complicated. So thanks for your patience.
What I would also add is, where would you attach that condition? It wouldn't be the conditional rezoning, and it wouldn't be the special land use. It would be the PUD. So when a developer asks for, correct? Theory, the PUD requests are when you can trade off things. You know, my, you know, of course, if the developer wanted to propose it as part of their PUD, we'll do 25% affordable, we would be in a really lucky spot. But the PUD request before you, the first one is just a technicality, really. The second one is a 3.8, 3-foot, 8-inch deviation from a setback for off-street parking. The second one is open space deviation. So it's hard to say, you know, if you want a 1-foot deviation, now we want you to build a community center and make 50% of the units affordable. There's a hard nexus between those two. You know, the PUD requests aren't that big. They're not asking to double the density or go 100 feet in the air, where you would expect a trade-off like that. But I think the applicant is saying they're going to go through the Brownfield. We have no choice, we cannot at this point give a Brownfield without doing affordability. I think like 141 Vester, those things will come to fruition with that request. If you want to add something, you could probably do like 141, where the developer will provide affordable housing if they receive an incentive. You could fashion something like that from 141, but we got there anyways. I don't know that you have to, but if, you know, you like that, we could say the developer will provide affordable housing if they receive an incentive from the city. But it's already covered.
It's already covered, yeah. You're saying you're doing it organically, and so I think what we don't see here is what your rental rates are and where they hit organically. I think that would be helpful, but I'm okay going through that process through the Brownfield myself. I'm comfortable with that, based off of your history with the city. I wouldn't do that for most, so. And they're already studios, so most of these, what, 30 units, I think, are studios? 65 are studios.
65 studios, 35 one.
So those are already going to hit that affordability range that I think Councilwoman Leaks May is looking for.
Necessarily.
It's a tough one. It would be nice to know, organically means $500 a month, but we're not there yet.
Yeah.
And it's probably not 500, but I, I think just by location and improvements and the size, you could call it, it's probably going to be naturally affordable market land.
Yeah. My understanding with my previous conversations with Councilwoman Leaks May, she's interested in deeply affordable at the 30% AMI, which is a completely different set of financial parameters that is not included in this project, so...
The only way to get to that deep, deep, deep affordability is through low-income housing tax credits, which are a competitive market, and it's a different animal than an average developer does.
So just, if I may, through the chair, the reason why that 30% has come up before, because it's where I work at the area agency on aging, and I know that a lot of callers and people who are disabled need that type of housing, especially after going through the pandemic. It's just, everything's gone up, but it's still hard to live. So I am flexible. It doesn't have to be 30. I love 30. I think it would be great if we had some of those for people, but we've gone, we've been flexible with the AMI already in developments that are coming into fruition right now. It's just that I, I'm just the type of person that likes to know. I know you said there's a persistent percentage, I know you said it's highly likely. So Roger, I'm looking at you and your experience with this because I just don't want to see another market-weighted building come up here.
But it's not, it's organic, it's organic affordability.
I like, I like what it says, but I haven't heard any numbers, so I don't know what that looks like, or I don't know what that, that is.
And through the chair, could I ask a quick question? What does organic affordability mean? I've never heard that term before.
Well, I think just by the thought process. So where I came from, we had million-dollar golf course homes, we had half-million-dollar homes, and we, for East Boulder County, had the highest number of mobile homes. They're not deed-restricted, we can't say they're affordable, but they're naturally, we termed it naturally occurring affordability. I think there's a diff, difference between probably this property and, say, 409 on 9 or 141 Vester. Those are going to command higher rents due to location, people are going to pay a premium, where this location, I can just envision, will be a little bit less. But in the end, I know the applicant wants to keep things low-priced, the market will dictate it. So I can imagine, just like when you're valuing a property, a home in downtown versus a home on the far east part of town, location matters, and that changes the price of the home sometimes dramatically. So in the end, the developer, I hate to say this, from them, will charge whatever they can dictate. And if it happens to be a premium, they're not going to forego, I can't imagine.
Of course.
But generally, I would say by location, train, east part of town, in a kind of a collective flex area, it's probably going to be lower than 141 Vester.
So to the developer, what does organic affordability mean? What do you think the market's going to command in that space?
There's, organic affordability, to me anyway, is, it starts with the input cost. So you're starting with a lower land price than a downtown site, so that's the first part of it. The other part is size, you know, brings down the price. And we also, we want to be lower-priced than our competition. That's our business model. Robertson Homes is a very successful developer. They build, you know, approachable housing. You can see their, their developments. They're not doing one-off, you know, multimillion-dollar homes. Our buildings are generally adaptive reuse, and we want to be the lowest price in the market so we don't lose our clients. So it's really hard to frame organic affordability. It's, it's much of a notion more than a mathematical equation.
Give me a range, like a high-low, something like that.
What, what's our range on the deals? 900?
By the trend trends.
Yeah. Floating around $1,000 per unit.
Okay.
And then there is, and I want to interject one other thing, is, and I don't know it's all the way through, but there's Senate Bill 129 that's coming through as well that's adding some additional horsepower to the Brownfield incentive, and that's something we... And that's something we can use as a tool to attack this project as well, where outside of just the core, you know, dirty cleanup and site infrastructure, now construction costs can be included in a brownfield incentive. So that's something that we can, we can look at together as well, to get more aggressive on some of the affordability ratios.
Through the chair, can I ask one more question? As part of our brownfield assessment, is it possible for us to, to look at things, like acquiring things like taller screening or things like that, that could be a sound dampener between those buildings that are going to house the residences and our industrial section? Is that possible within brownfield credit discussions? I don't know how any of that works.
Anything is on the table.
Oh, sweet.
Except for, except for...
Within reason.
Yeah. Except, within reason, let me have that. Except for, it all comes down to numbers. So let's pretend the brownfield is estimated to save them $2 million, and they have a $2 million gap, but they want to provide affordable housing at $500,000. You know, they still have a million-dollar, million-and-a-half-dollar gap. So how you say, now build a million-dollar wall and a community center and repave the road? I mean, those things don't program. But assuming there is enough to get them through gap and the affordable housing, then add up more stuff. And I think 141 Vester, we talked about that incentive. The NEZ was valued at 1.7 million, the affordable housing was like 1.4 million. You got to put a little meat on the bone, but we were able to eke out additional benefits there. The only thing I'd be concerned about is what we add and how that changes, going back to Planning Commission, if we need to get a amended site plan or a PUD, you know, if a wall is on the property line too tall, I don't know. That may then trigger a re-review. I just don't know what that imagines. But when we go through the numbers, the MEBC will, in giving a brownfield, then we'll know how much savings it'll be, what they're providing for affordable housing, and then how much is left, and is there enough for some of the gap and to help out with additional improvement sure.
And through the chair, one more question, I promise this is probably the end.
I don't know if I believe you.
If we, let's say we, in a hypothetical, we approve all of this tonight. It still goes back to the Planning Commission or...
Only the site plan goes back.
And...
And a lot of, some of these conditions, like my issue with the sound and the smell and the lease, that would go onto the site plan for approval at the Planning Commission.
And so if that goes back for site plan approval, and they add, let's say, a 20-foot wall with pillows so that we can't hear anything. If that happens, does this come back to council for the same process again? No?
As long as it doesn't have anything with, like, if they wanted a 20-foot hall, 20-foot tall wall, I think in the commercial zone district, which this was at the MSD, 2 is 8-foot. So then they'd have to, we'd have to figure out a PUD amendment to go taller than that. So I can't say no because I don't know what would be triggered. But, you know, within reason, the Planning Commission approves a site plan, it moves on, it's done. If they deny it, then it doesn't, then they can't, then they got to, it doesn't pass either.
Love your earnest answers to my very serious hypotheticals. I appreciate that, thank you. All right, well, this was a good discussion. We have an attempt to do a motion.
I'd like to make a comment after the motion.
Wait, I think we all did.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
I'll start with motion number one. I move after properly noticed public hearing that city council approved the conditional rezoning agreement dated March 28, 2023, and adopt the ordinance in the council packet to rezone 700 and 800 Woodward Heights being parcels with Sidwell numbers 24, 27, 406, 004, 24, 27, 406, 005, and 24, 27, 406, 006 from M1 Limited Industrial District to mixed, to mixed-use district. After time, I'm getting tired.
I need a second.
Support.
A move by James and supported by Polica. James?
Hold on, we're going to discuss before voting.
Oh, sorry. Anything on the rezoning?
Comments? Overall, I just want to say, so I probably have come across as very aggressively positive about this project. And I think I come from a very unique situation because I've been working, you know, with the Planning Commission over the last year and a half, that I've seen the development, and I've seen everything, that a lot of this stuff has just been introduced to you tonight. So I've got time to, you know, really absorb the information. And one of the main reasons I'm so supportive of this project is because people want to live in Ferndale. The demand continues to skyrocket, and the house sales continue to skyrocket. I really don't want another 100 units in the downtown area that's five stories tall. This is an opportunity to provide additional housing that will have limited impact to the surrounding neighborhoods, but still allow for people at a lower income to be able to, you know, live in our community, and especially people that might be forced out because their rents are getting too high, but they still want to stay in Ferndale. So that's, that's one of the big reasons why I think this is a great project and a great project for this location.
All right, through the chair, I want to add to that a little bit. I mean, one, I will acknowledge the awkwardness of not having an approved site plan, but having some motions in front of us that are kind of broader than, than the specifics of the site plan, and really are looking at the, the uses of these parcels. And so certainly for voting purposes, that's what I'm focused on. But I do, I'll also take the opportunity to just sort of add some, some things that would probably be more appropriate in site plan approval, but I'm going to take the moment to recommend them anyway, especially to Councilmember Polica, who is on the Planning Commission and will be engaged in that site plan approval process. So I'm going to knock these out, and then I'm going to shift back to the focus of the motion. One is, I agree with, with Councilmember Leaks May that we want to set our sites on accessibility higher than the bare minimum ADA requirements. As someone who's litigated ADA cases, ADA is the floor, and it's a pathetic floor. It's not the goal. And so one comment I was going to make about the, the accessible parking is that since there is a fair amount of parking on, on this property in excess of the minimums, I'd urge the applicant to consider converting a few additional parking spots to accessible spots. According to the CDC, over 11% of adults in the U.S. have a mobility disability that involves serious difficulty walking or climbing stairs. And I think, so to stick with minimums that are, what, below 5% doesn't really meet the needs of, of, of the disability, the community with disabilities. And this is really silly, but I, I love the sunflower idea, but I also have an affinity for milkweed so that monarchs can, can live and thrive in our community. Cone flower is, is a native plant, and the Ferndale flower, maybe, maybe there can be some mixed flower usage. Okay, setting that stuff aside, because that's, really has nothing to do with the motion. I do want to make a couple of comments because this does relate to rezoning from light industrial to mixed use. There is very high demand for housing in Ferndale. So I respectfully disagree with earlier comments that we have enough housing. Objectively, the data shows that we do not. And not only do we not have enough housing to meet demand, which is part of the affordability problem, is having constricted housing supply. We also have housing supply that does not meet the current demographics. We did a very good study back in 2019, and that study demonstrated that at the time, well, actually using 2017 numbers, over 80% of Ferndale's housing stock consisted of single detached houses that were mostly built between 1920 and 1960, when the population was mostly households with children. And even if you recalculate those numbers, which I did, and take away some single detached housing and add even several hundred, hundred units of apartments, we're still well over 75% single detached houses. And that just doesn't, isn't quite compatible with having only around 10% households with children. I happen to be one of them, but I'm very cognizant of the fact that my family is a very small minority in the community. The vast majority of our community are single people living alone or couples without children. And those demographics are getting larger and larger and larger with every census or other survey measurement. So we do need to be cognizant that Ferndale is changing, and this high demand is driving rents higher and higher. And this is the type of project that though, at this moment, we can't guarantee income-based rents, it, it has every marker for being, again, not income-based, but a, a lower market rate, we'll say, because I don't want to over, overpromise affordability. And on that note, I would also recommend reading the recent issue of Mother Jones. There are two really fantastic pieces. You can't get more progressive or left than Mother Jones. And these two pieces that are within their Electrify Everything series, one is called Think Globally, Build Like Hell Locally. The other one is called Yes in Our Backyards. And it really challenges a lot of the notions that, you know, in order to meet affordable housing goals, everything has to be deeply, deeply subsidized. That, that's not the case. That's a lofty goal that we'd all like to meet, but the state incentives, the federal incentives, aren't there to meet those demands. And that really building in inner-ring suburbs, urban regions, especially closer to transit, have a positive impact on affordability. And developments like this can have the impact of actually reducing rents in the vicinity. So I want to be mindful of those dynamics when we're talking about rezoning and adding to our housing stock.
I appreciate those comments, and thank you for saying them, because I was going to say them, and now I don't have to.
I do have one last comment, Mayor.
Let us get through, did you already make comments?
I didn't.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Okay. I know, I know, all right. So I just wanted, just to kind of share with Roger, also into developers, that I know the Disability Network, they are funded to assist with like consulting. And I just think that when we were at the MML conference a couple of weeks ago, speaking, listening to the presentation, I believe what they placed great emphasis on is doing it right the first time. And I know that I've seen some posts about some of the businesses that we have coming in that are not, maybe should have done something before they were set up to, to provide business. So I just want it known to you all and to you, Roger, for future developments, that they do do consultations, and they're funded to do that, just so you know that.
I support this project. I like this project. Thank you for evolving it and meeting more of our value points as a city. I grew up near railroad tracks. At college, I was, my head was near the closest to the Dinger railroad tracks at Albion. Downtown Birmingham has railroad tracks, and their Triangle District, downtown Royal Oak has, living near the railroad tracks. I grew up in Brighton, there is now new housing against the railroad tracks. So living on the wrong side of the tracks is no longer a negative connotation. People just live along the tracks because qualified housing supports that. Also, the quiet zones created this opportunity, because I'm not sure this project would be viable if there was a train blast going by with every railroad. So when you think of federal policy changing and federal support for a local community trying to deal with their four railroad crossings and make them quieter, I think this is a result of creating and opening up opportunity for redevelopment that perhaps wouldn't be there otherwise. So kudos to the former council and Mayor Coulter for helping navigate that with CN Railroad at the time, as well as Councilwoman Polica. And I'm not going to talk anymore about housing because Councilwoman James said...
So you're thunderous.
Well, no, I think you're just reinforcing what we're trying to do with our policies in this city. And then finally, I would like, because the next item on the agenda is zoning ordinance update, I think it's time we take a look at the zoning code that says you have to come to council if there is a 5-2 split, not 6 vote. I have no idea when that provision was put in. I've been on council for 14 years. This has never, ever been triggered. And what a way to put more time and cost on a developer, where our Planning Commission, whom I trust explicitly to make these decisions on behalf of this city, that we don't have this come back and ask for Plan, City Council to act like the Planning Commission when the Planning Commission is aptly appointed to do this job. So please make these rules go away. Through the zoning ordinance update. Roger, hear that. All right, so I think McKenna's here as well. You've heard that, right? So hold your turn, we have two more motions, all right.
Mayor, through the, through the chair, can I have my, my last comment on this?
Yes, go ahead.
So I did want to, to thank the developer. And Tad, since you're still here in the audience, your gutter systems that you showed, amazing. And I love it, I love the idea. I think the, I think the Ice House development is phenomenal. It's a great reuse of that property. My, my hangups are some of the comments from the Planning Commission members that voted against this at the Planning Commission. The, the noise and decibel level, and just to, to give council perspective, the only reason I know about decibel levels is because of all the comments about chickens many, many years ago, back in 2012, when it was passed, but we started the conversation in 2010. And I actually had to go out and measure decibel levels from chickens and see how far out you had to be so that you could be below a threshold within a residential...
That's esoteric.
It is, but that is kind of my forte, isn't it? And just as perspective, in an industrial area, a decibel level of 90 decibels is like the sound of a lawnmower. And if you imagine a lawnmower running at night when you're trying to sleep, all these conversations about having two bedrooms and having children in the apartment system, all of that goes away because it's going to be noisy. And even if they have it in their lease agreement that these individuals shouldn't be making complaints, and I, I agree, especially when you live next to a railroad track and next to an industrial area, it makes sense that you wouldn't, you wouldn't want to complain because you should have a fundamental understanding of where you are and what to expect. But if they complain about the railroad track, I can't do anything, and we're not going to have a conversation. When they complain about the businesses, that's when things get a little bit squirrely because we have to have the police come out there, and the police... because we have to have the police come out there, and the police aren't going to look at your lease agreement. They're not going to go back to that. They're going to go by our code. And that presents a real conflict for me. And when we, when we're looking at this tonight, and we have this opportunity for the zoning ordinance update, and we can make thoughtful changes, to me, that's the opportunity. But other than that, I'm ninety percent there with you guys. I just don't want to see a conflict where, where we may have residents that are asking us to limit the hours that the businesses can work, or limit the noise in some way, or change things for them and impact their business. That I can't support.
If I may, through the chair, I think for this particular, because I think fundamentally, I'm with you. I think for this particular motion, that's specifically a, oh, I scrolled down already, the conditional rezoning approval, personally, I'm inclined to vote yes on this, but I am giving the feedback that your concern and the concerns raised by others are valid and need to be addressed through a different mechanism. And again, it's awkward because we have like a proposed site plan, but one that has not been approved yet. Hopefully, some of that mitigation can be addressed there. But I think, I think we might need an ordinance update as well, because converting or having mixed use in our light industrial district has been a goal for a very long time, and the sound issue has been the major pushback, understandably, you know, concerns from existing industrial businesses. And I think, I think we need to address it, you know, more than just through lease agreements.
Yep. Duly noted, Roger. McKenna. All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Are we ready to roll?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, next up is the next motion that we need to have approved or motioned.
I'll take a crack at it again, because I don't mind tripping on my words. I move that after a properly noticed public hearing, that city council approve the planned unit development agreement for seven hundred to eight hundred Woodward Heights, being parcels with Sidwell numbers listed in the agenda, based on plans dated March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, and amend the zoning map to show the PUD overlay district with the following conditions. Do I need to read all those out loud, City Attorney?
Usually just say conditions.
With the conditions printed in the agenda packet.
All right, we need a second?
I second, with clarification.
Moved by James and seconded by Pollock with clarification.
Yep. So this one is specific for the Ice House, is not impacted by the housing residential at all. No, this is the PUD agreement.
This is everything. This is not just the Ice House.
Oh, this is everything.
Yes, because there's one application.
It's late, I'm sorry.
All right, there is a motion on the floor. Any comment on this? Madam Clerk? James?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
McColsky?
No.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Hyanna?
Yes.
All right, moving on to the special land use.
I will make this motion. So I move to approve, oh, this is the one that we approved.
Special land use approval motion?
Yeah. Well, this was approved by the planning commission. So after properly noticed public hearing and the unanimous recommendation of the planning commission, that city council approve the special land use application for a banquet hall use for seven hundred dash eight hundred Woodward Heights, being parcels with Sidwell number two four dash two seven dash two four zero six dash zero zero four, and two four dash two seven dash four zero six dash zero zero five, and two four dash two seven dash four oh six dash zero zero six, based on plans dated March twenty-eighth to twenty twenty-three, and adopt the findings of the planning commission that the request meets and satisfies the review standards set forth in twenty-four dash two seven three of the zoning ordinance. This is the one that is only the Ice House.
Oh, I'll second. Moved by Pollock and supported by James. I did have one other comment that I wanted to make about total, this total project that I just thought of, but it's about Pleasant Ridge. You may be aware, the developer, about Pleasant Ridge's issues with traffic on Woodward Heights and their traffic study. They are going to be putting in speed humps and chicanes and everything to slow down traffic there. So when you build more housing and put more parking, and it creates more traffic, so that's just going to be expectation there. And I think we'll have some concerns from Pleasant Ridge about some of these uses. So we should be having a conversation with Pleasant Ridge about this, as well as courtesy. So with that, we have a motion on the floor. Pollock?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McColsky?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Hyanna?
Yes.
All right, thank you for council, for those who voted yes, supporting the values of our housing inclusive plan and trying to create more housing for people to live in Ferndale. Go forth, please take in consideration of all the other aspects we brought into here as we acted like the planning commission tonight, but better now than your brownfield process, so you can become better prepared.
And I'll see them soon.
And, yes, all right. Wow, guys, this is the latest week on in a while. We are now moving on to the, oh, God, consent agenda, not the regular agenda. I'm going to read everything, and then council can do their bidding. All right. Seven A, approval of the April twenty-four, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes. Seven B, approval of the resolution to observe Monday, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three as peace officers memorial day and proclaim the week of May fourteenth, twenty twenty-three as National Police Week. Seven C, approval of a special permit for the annual pig and whiskey to be held on July fourteenth to sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Seven D, consideration of license agreement renewal between the City of Ferndale and Melgo to use the bike parking facility in the DOT for an accessible bike program. Seven E, approval and acceptance of Raymond E. Shepherd House, five oh three East Nine Mile Storm Drain Easement from five oh three East Nine Mile LDHAA Limited Partnership. Seven F, approval of the generator radiator, approval of the generator radiator repairs at Albany Road Pump Station by Cummins for five thousand three hundred nineteen and thirty-three cents. Seven G, approval of front door replacement at Curling Club by Crystal Glass Inc. for six thousand three hundred sixty-six and twenty-five cents. Seven H, approval to submit payment to Premier Polysteel in the amount of seven thousand three hundred eighty-six for picnic tables in the splash pad at Martin Road Park. Seven I, consideration for the city manager acting as a certifying official to submit a request for release of funds to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for five oh three East Nonel Road, known as the Raymond E. Shepherd House. Seven J, consideration adoption of bond ordinance to prove, to provide for the acquisition and construction of additions, improvements, and extensions to the water supply and sanitary sewer system of the City of Ferndale. Seven K, receipt and approval of fiscal year twenty twenty-three third quarter budget amendment. Seven L, approval of a special event permit for the spring fever plant and flower market to be held Saturday, May tenth, twenty twenty-three. Seven M, approval of the MLU between the City of Ferndale and City of Pleasant Ridge for services rendered during the twenty twenty-three Spain youth soccer season, and authorization for the Parks and Recreation Director's sign agreement. Seven N, approval of a contract with Plant and Lawn Service and Landscaping LLC for execution of community standards resulting from code enforcement activities. Seven O, approval of the property agreement for F3 Properties LLC for two-two-one-three-four Woodward Avenue. Seven P, approval of bills and payrolls submitted by the Finance Director and subject reviewed by the Council Finance Committee, as your wishes counselled.
Through the chair, one clarification. On seven L, you said May tenth, it's May twentieth.
May twentieth, thanks for that correction.
Not a problem. I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Moved by Pollock and supported by McColsky. Madam Clerk? Pollock?
Yes.
McColsky?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Hyanna?
Yes.
All right, on to the regular agenda, which is eight A, consideration of amended and reinstated ordinance of one-two-five-five, the City of Ferndale to provide for service charge in lieu of taxes, pilot for payment, service charge in lieu of taxes for a proposed multifamily housing development for elderly persons and low-income or moderate-income persons to be financed or assisted pursuant to provisions of the State Housing Development Authority Act of nineteen sixty-six. Oh, my.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would normally make a joke about how this one was only going to take an hour. However, I think my counterparts are going to beat me up at the parking lot, so I'm going to go quicker on this one. This is a housekeeping item, so this is related to the payment in lieu of taxes for the Shepherd House. So there were three changes, I believe, that were being requested. Dan can maybe elaborate. But one was that they needed to obtain the property by a certain, a date certain. They were late, but they have acquired it, so there's no reason to even have that anymore. The second one was some housekeeping items on definitions. And then the third one, I think it referenced, Dan can speak to it more intelligently, referenced that they would obtain government-financed loan, and I think they are going private. Dan can maybe say what that change was.
Through the chair, their financing mechanism is not going to be a mortgage, but it is an otherwise authorized method of financing allowed for under the state housing, the State Housing Development Authority Act. So it is permitted, but the ordinance didn't reflect that in the previous iteration that was approved prior to their acquisition of the property, which was the principal reason for the amendment.
With that said, previous thing you did was for the request for release of funds for eight housing vouchers. I think council had asked, or just to clarify the affordability, the, it's still a one-hundred percent affordable. I think they're getting eight vouchers from the Federal Housing Commission, but all the other units are affordable as per the agreement, so nothing has changed there.
If there are no questions, I would...
Take it away.
Move to approve the amended and restated, and restated ordinance number twelve fifty-five of the City of Ferndale to provide for a service charge in lieu of taxes, pilot for a proposed multifamily housing development known as the Raymond E. Shepherd House, as submitted by the CED Director.
Support. Moved by James, supported by Leaks May. We lost our clerk.
It got so late.
Call the vote.
She thought we were going to speak.
All right, y'all.
It's been another two hours.
McColsky?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
Hyanna?
Yes.
All right, on to regular agenda. Welcome McKenna. All right, eight A, or sorry, eight B, consideration of the contract between the City of Ferndale and McKenna to assist in the zoning ordinance rewrite project. Thank you for your patience and staying this late. That's rough.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. As the mayor mentioned, this is the consideration of a contract with McKenna for the zoning ordinance rewrite. I think it's important to go through some information, so I'm sorry it's getting late. But we recently adopted our land use plan. What came from the land use plan was a recommendation to amend the code in various sections. The code dates back to the nineteen sixties, more than likely. It's archaic in both concept and language. Over the years, we've made amendments, so we make an amendment here because we have a good idea, and then we make another amendment, then we make another amendment, then we realize the last amendment didn't take into consideration something very deep, and then we get into conflicts, we get into conflicts with planning commission trying to look up things, staff even trying to interpret it, and then we take the liberty to interpret what it means, which then could invite people saying, why did someone else get something and I don't get it, or lawsuits. So it's pretty typical. It seems like lately, in the last couple of years, there's been a push all over the country to amend zoning codes, and it could be due to racial inequity that we're realizing now. It could be due to sustainability measures are just advancing, changing housing dynamics in terms of affordability all over the country. So I think Madison Heights is rewriting theirs or has. East Point, Hazel Park, and Westland, and this is truly all over the country that people are, cities now are taking a look at just getting rid of the old one and creating a brand-new one. So on the heels of the master plan came the potential to rewrite the code. We do get a fifty thousand dollar grant from the MDC for the ready-to-use facilities, so we were excited to potentially use that. We did put out an RFP, I think, back in February, and we had five respondents. So we had McKenna, Smith Group, Giffords Webster, Zone Co., and Houssil Levine. Zone Co. and Houssil Levine were out of state. They were much, much higher. I'll pull up the pricing, I can't on my phone. With that said, we commissioned a, put together a steering committee group of the, myself, CD Director, Assistant to the City Manager, Sustainability Coordinator, DDA Director, Communications Director, both planners, and Michelle Foster, Chair of the Planning Commission, and Councilor Pollock as the staff liaison. We accepted all the...
Council liaison.
Sorry, council liaison. What did I say?
Staff liaison.
It's late. We're almost... Council liaison to the planning commission. We took all the requests in, and then we realized we needed to come up with a matrix and score. So we created a matrix, we created a weighted score, and then we went through each of the RFPs. We asked each entity for additional information. They supplied that back. The steering committee got together again and then scored everybody. It was a tight race, I'll be honest, between mostly McKenna and Smith Group, but also, quite frankly, all of them, but the local ones a little bit more. The pricing came in. Giffords Webster was ninety thousand five sixty-three. Smith Group was about ninety-two, I'm sorry, a hundred and two thousand. McKenna was a hundred and five eight. Houssil Levine was one sixty-nine, and Zone Co. was one fifty-two. One of the questions did relate to price, but we really did not spend too much time on that. It was who is the best fit, who is going to speak mostly to racial equity and sustainability in housing. So Andrew is here with McKenna to ask any questions of him or for him to give a statement. I will say the most important part of this, at this point, is the community engagement plan. We've asked them to provide a community engagement plan. And as you know, the city manager has talked about the community engagement plan, studying the one forty-one Vester Quadrant, Lot thirteen, Lot fifteen area charrette, that was still kind of trying to be in flux a little bit. But what we thought was that we're paying for a zoning code rewrite for the entire city, not for one property or one small quadrant to solve a problem. So even though we committed to doing this as part of the community engagement plan, we broke it out. So McKenna is working on a proposal to us to do just that, but we thought do it away from what is our zoning code rewrite. So the four community engagements we have, and this was based on feedback from city council that I asked about five months ago, and from planning commission, was four community engagements, racial equity, sustainability, housing diversity, and downtown design. Those are kind of far-reaching that hit different pockets that are really important. So we, I did not want to forget that we did promise to do sort of a quadrant property study. That will be coming. I hope to have a contract maybe at the next council meeting that we can engage on that separately. But if you have questions, you know, I'm here to answer them. I think Andrew can say a thing or two that's important, and then, if you have questions.
Thanks for being here.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, well, Roger covered so much, and I'm a little sleepy. But yeah, it's, it is really great being back here. I, personally, this is very meaningful to me. This project would be very meaningful to me because I, I lived in Laufson Nine for four years until relatively recently. So I, you know, have a pretty good feeling for Ferndale already. But as Roger touched on, we at McKenna are very experienced in doing these zoning ordinance rewrites. We just finished doing East Point's rewrite, and basically we'll have the same team or the same core team as we did with East Point on this. And right now, two other members at McKenna are in the process of rewriting the ordinance for Madison Heights and Hazel Park. Madison Heights and Hazel Park. So just really looking forward to getting started. We've already put together a preliminary public engagement plan and a schedule, and we anticipate finishing this in about 10 months, which, you know, will take a lot of effort, but we can certainly deliver that in 10 months. So, thank you. And I don't know, does anyone have any questions?
I'll open it up to Counsel to ask questions of our expert vendor that we're looking to hire.
I have a quick question about the community engagement plan, and I'm not sure if this is for you or for Roger, but if we have ideas about organizations or resources that would help supplement this, who do we direct those suggestions to?
Oh, if you have, if you have suggestions for people who we should be reaching out to? I would, please contact me. So my, my contact information is on this form, and I can, I can give Roger my business cards to hand out. But yeah, that'd be me.
And CC and city staff.
Okay.
So yeah, just to add, Kyle will be the staff member taking this through. Obviously, Andrew and his team will be holding the events, hearing feedback from staff in the Steering Committee, drafting a language that will prove and pass out. But I think through this process, she'll get to know Andrew pretty quickly, so you'll have his email, but definitely copy staff on anything, so Kyle can see.
I had a, do you mind if I go? I had a question about the MEDC $50,000 grant. It says that it has been initially approved. Is that in writing?
Even better. So when I wrote that staff report, the first round where they seek initial feedback was approved, but we got notice today. I think I emailed Counsel that we were officially approved today.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So that brings the price, I think we put a 10% contingency. So we're talking $54,000 to $60,000 will be our cost with the community engagement for the Northeast Quadrant being separate.
Just a follow-up. Did East Point or Hazel Park or Madison Heights get an MEDC grant to do their zoning rewrite? Or did they even try apply?
I'm not sure.
Okay, just curious.
No.
The RRC money is available for so many different things. I'm just wondering, curious. Any questions for our council?
On the community engagement piece, so it does say within here that you're ready to be flexible, but I wanted to hear from you how you envision, let's say, we don't have another pandemic or some horrendous thing happen. Are you thinking that this is going to be primarily in person with community engagement, or will it be predominantly digital?
We like to do both, but it would be primarily in person, but then we'll have surveys that people can take online, and then these virtual idea boards where people can just, you know, share their ideas. So yeah, to answer your question, both in person and online.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks.
I can add a little bit, and then I'll answer another question. Yeah, I think it'll be like the land use plan. So through the land use plan, staff went to community events to advertise. We were accepting comments and the event's going on. So I think staff will be taking some of that off of them by going to community events and having postcards and telling people to reach out. There will be some online. People only feel comfortable online or only, are too busy to give comments, so there will be the online board that people can comment. They can come to staff at any point and give us comments. So I think we're going to try to cast the net wide like we did the land use plan. And then there was a question, something about people we're reaching out to. We did send the community engagement plan to a number of entities. So every person on the Steering Committee we sent it to, we sent it to the Accessibility and Inclusion Committee, we sent it to the Ferndale Public Library, we sent it to the Ferndale Public Schools, the DDA, the Housing Commission, and a couple other groups. So we asked them for feedback if they could give it to us today. It was kind of late last week, but hopefully we'll do a last, you know, last call for general comments to see if anybody has comments on our community engagement strategy.
I'll have to make it through the chair. So I was looking at the McKenna team. So I was just wondering, does anyone, I didn't see it, forgive me, I looked through it quickly, but does anyone have experience or some sort of, well, deep experience regarding racial equity, inclusion, and things like that regarding these discussions?
Well, I think that through these past ordinances in East Point, in, you know, Madison Heights, in Hazel Park, they're also dealing with the same types of, types of, you know, core issues. So yes. But, but to tell you the truth, this emphasis is, you know, you, you want more of an emphasis on racial diversity, but yeah, we'll, we'll certainly, we'll certainly do that.
I will add that from the Steering Committee's standpoint, we did include somebody who had an interest in each one, so Claire from Communications. Denisea was on it, and I think that's one of the lenses that she particularly was looking through. I don't want to put her on the spot by any stretch of imagination, but I think that's one of the things she honed in on, what she was looking at. Claire was looking at sustainability through that lens. So hopefully that provides a little perspective.
Through the chair. Yeah, being on, I'll just expand on what you've shared. Being on the Steering Committee, I concur, everyone kind of looked at these proposals from different perspectives. I tried to look at it from the community engagement perspective, and Denisea was fantastic at bringing up, you know, the issues with equity and inclusion. And I don't know, through the chair, if you'd like to offer her an opportunity to speak, since she was such an integral part of the discussions. Out of the plans that we reviewed, I rated this one the highest because, and I don't know if any of you really had a chance to absorb the material, but as I was reading through it, I felt like it was, which is interesting, I felt like it was someone who, who wrote it interviewed us about what Ferndale is like, you know, and what kind of community do we want to continue to be. And so it, it comes as no surprise when, when you shared that you've lived here for several years because you know Ferndale, and it came through in the presentation. You know, some of, some of them used Ferndale photos but just didn't truly understand what Ferndale was. And they didn't include a lot of the diversity inclusion issues. I didn't think that the community engagement aspects were as thorough or in-depth. And some of it was, you know, based on the amount of hours that they were willing to invest, based on the cost. I didn't think that it was worth it either. I can't remember the number of hours, but I think you're investing a lot more hours than a lot of the other programs were. So I liked the fact that there was a lot of engagement on this work. They just came through, and I think it's, it's going to be very well worth the investment to do a rewrite.
I also think that our residents are asking for more in-depth engagement as well, so I think it's worth the investment. I just appreciate the Planning Commission and the committee's due diligence care over the five proposals and scoring. I know how much work that is to go through, I don't know, there's like 70 to 80 pages per proposal. So it's an intensive side project on top of your normal duties already. Are there any other questions?
The only thing I'd add about racial equity for Counsel Leaks May is, the lens I'm viewing it through is what dimensional standards do we have? That's usually what we focus on, that were used to exclude people. And so I'll be asking them deeply to look at each one, like minimum lot sizes. In some areas was an exclusionary measure to only allow single-family homes. So I want to see what dimensional standards we have that were either created or potentially created to exclude people and then undo those to the level that we can. So that's my lens.
All right, we need a motion to proceed.
I'll make a motion because the motion that was offered, I don't think was really, a suggested motion wasn't. So I'm going to be throwing chunks of things in here. I move to approve the contract between the City of Ferndale and McKenna to assist in the zoning ordinance rewrite project with costs not to exceed $116,380 and expenses charged to general fund 101-371.818.800 and include any reimbursements from MEDC account number 101-371.545.000 up to $50,000, as submitted by the city planner.
Would have written this out.
Moved by Pollock, supported by James. Final comment?
Counsel didn't even help me with it.
Yeah, I have a couple of quick comments. And this is really more for the public, and then I have one for McKenna as well. All you have to do is Google zoning policy and racism, and you can see how zoning policy has been used essentially to replace, you know, restrictions that were overruled by the Supreme Court. They just took a different form, and that was zoning policy. It's really important to me that we focus on that in this process, not exclusively, but heavily. And I, and then the comment to McKenna in particular, I was glad to see that in your public engagement that you prioritize education because I think this is a, racial equity in zoning, I think is a really important opportunity to educate the public as we're seeking their engagement because so many people don't know this history, don't know how these tools have been wielded. You know, I'm learning a lot about it myself. I don't profess to be an expert on it. And a resource that I do want to recommend that we consider tapping into is the Michigan Roundtable has a traveling exhibit called, I think it's called We Don't Want Them Here, and it takes, you know, real southeast Michigan examples of, you know, how racism has caused people to be excluded from various communities. And I believe that they can do a version of that presentation materials that focuses on zoning ordinances. And I think that would be a really powerful educational tool in this conversation. And I'm happy to connect you directly to Des Squire, who's in charge of that project.
Thank you. All right, we've got a motion on the floor. Madam Clerk?
Leaks May?
Yes.
McCloskey?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
All right, folks, that is the end of our regular agenda. Thank you for being here. Go home. We are moving on to call the audience, or call the Counsel. Sorry. I think I started right to left last time?
Staff first.
Oh, no, thank you.
We have one.
We have one.
And the rest have been submitted.
Okay. Appreciate the brevity of staff department updates today.
Yep. Good evening, Counsel. I'm going to try and keep it brief as well. I was asked to recap a speeding issue we've had over the past two years on East Chesterfield. As you know, in 2022, the City Manager initiated the Traffic Safety Committee, or Committee, the part of the Police Department, or the role of the Police Department on that committee is to serve as a single point of contact. That's Detective Allison Schenk. So she received a complaint from a resident down there about speeding. We initiated the use of our new radar display signs, speed signs, and we took a beautiful two-week speed summary with the reports that the software that we pay for generates. These reports are then handed back to the complainant and reviewed. They're also reviewed by the committee to see if there's actual speeding problem there and if we're going to direct any enforcement there. So since February of 2022, we've conducted three speed studies on East Chesterfield after repeated complaints. All three studies have shown that their average speed is below the speed limit, and even the speed of the 85th percentile and 50th percentile are at or around the speed limit. We do a variance of two miles per hour or lower. So our conclusion was that there was not a speed problem that we needed to assign directed enforcement there. At some point in late 2022 and early 2023, CED became involved because there was a request for a speed hump. They asked us for a recommendation. We did the third study at that time, and our recommendation that the data did not support doing directed enforcement or installing speed humps. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you.
Through the chair. I made that request. Residents had reached out to me on that street, and they didn't understand why they were being denied. And I was getting third-handed information about who was communicated what, when, why. So I requested that the information be shared publicly, so residents on that street can have a clear understanding of why it was denied.
I can add a little perspective to that. So currently, as our policy states, there's no requirement to obtain a speed study. So residents can just request a speed hump and go through the process. We are looking at our policy to make a couple minor changes. One is to require a speed study first, so that we have data to go off of. The second is acknowledgement that a speed hump does not stop traffic. It's meant to slow down traffic going 30, 35, less than 35 miles an hour. So it's not like you see those speed bumps that are small and you hit them. They're meant to slow traffic down to go to the speed limit, not to slow traffic down to 10 miles an hour. For these, you got 85th percentile, that means 85% of vehicles were going less, let me add one thing. What Detective Schenk does usually is she leaves, she puts something, a speed radar on a sign, and leaves it running so people driving by can see it. But then people say, well, of course, people slowed down because you could see it. So for one week, she usually keeps the speed up, then the next week she takes it down. Once she takes it down, it's just a box on a pole. Most people would not even know it's there. The numbers are honestly very similar when the speed number is shown and when it's not. So I don't know which one is which here because it doesn't say whether it was on or not, but for the 85th percentile, it means 85% of vehicles were going 26.2 miles or less, and then on this one, it was 26.53. So 85% of the vehicles are going less than that, and actually 50% are going less than 22 miles an hour. So we're going to look at the policy to require a speed study, to require an acknowledgement that the speed hump is not meant to stop vehicles or slow them down dramatically. It's just meant to be able to travel the posted speed limit. We are looking at changing the percentage. Right now, it's 51% to request a speed hump. Our parking permit program is 65%. And the current policy doesn't have a plan if somebody actually wants the opposite, wants to remove one. So we'll be looking at all those things. But I think Counsel Pollock mentioned that they only scored a 22. It's because the average speed at 50th percentile was 22 or less.
Okay.
That was the 22.
So the 22, 25 was 25 miles an hour is probably what it's reflecting, 22 out of 25?
That's probably, but there's no score. We don't have a scoring system.
Because I'm like, I don't, I could not answer what 22 out of 25 was, you know? Well, we only got a score of 22 out of 25. I'm, God.
Yeah, the other thing I'd like to do, I think, is, we've talked about it, is when people request these, it's just staff to go above and beyond and go out and visit and show the neighbor what 25 miles an hour of speed is, because the perspective from your porch is that car's going 45, and it's not. So I think we'll be looking at doing, for the resident on that street who is having a concern, do an actual test at what 15, 20, 25, and 30 look like, and that might change perspective a little bit.
Well, and this may be a little more work, but when, when those signatures are submitted with addresses, and if it's denied, maybe we should be with addresses, and if it's denied, maybe we should be contacting all those residents and set up an appointment where if those residents want, they can speak to someone and someone can show the whole group at one time, they have the option to have that conversation, you know? Because right now, it's one person talking to the whole street because they made the request, and then they're getting yelled at because, you know, well, did you submit it right? Well, you know, why didn't you fight for it? You know, it's not fair to that one person getting yelled at.
I don't believe we get a lot of these, so we could figure out some kind of, you know, onsite community meeting, you know, with the Woodward change, I don't know if more people will be requesting these and see where they go, but generally speaking, police, the police department's job is simply to deploy the speed measurement tool and provide it to the person. They don't deny, it really falls to CED to process the speed hump request.
It's interesting that those small streets like that are 25 miles an hour. Hilton is 25 miles an hour.
That's a residential street, that's state laws.
Yeah, okay.
May I draw your attention to our Ferndale Moves 2021 Plan, where we have slow zones, which was passed before you two were here, the planners. I'd like to go back to that and see how we can fill some of those obligations that we said we would do in tackling safety on the streets. Also, I would like the staff to consider the rubber humps, not these long humps with signs. Detroit is putting in rubber humps everywhere without the long humps across the street and the yellow signs, which people are complaining about yellow signs. I talked to two residents last night on Farmdale, they asked for and petitioned for it, but the residents hate these signs indicating the humps, and I don't think Detroit is putting in these signs indicating humps everywhere. So I really would like us to look at the, I can't believe I keep saying humps, but I would really like you to look at the rubber humps, design and costs. Because they're quieter, which is a number one concern of residents, and they hate the signs, there are other treatments out there I would like, can we commit to doing that? Can we commit to figuring that out and coming back with a recommendation? I'm not just talking smack up here on the dais, asking you to go look at it, I'm serious.
At 11 o'clock at night?
I have tried before, I have asked, and it goes nowhere, and so now I'm like, put my foot down.
I have to familiarize myself with this stuff first, but I think, I know you've mentioned 12th Avenue or Liverneys where they have these, where do you?
And I...
And you've said it before, in Detroit, they've...
They're everywhere, just go to their program called Streets for People. I mean, they're putting them on every street, side street where they can, they have a whole program, and the design treatment is different, and they accommodate snowplows and emergency vehicles, so, in a way. So if Detroit can do it, I'm just like, why can't we?
We'll do a field trip and go look at a couple different treatments and then see how that incorporates.
Yes, please.
Their, East Chesterfield is scheduled for a resurfacing next year, and I think they really wanted to get that as part of the whole program, so.
Yeah, and I also think we should be looking at raised crosswalks at very specific places to help do slowing down, particularly at Withington and Plantavon, where everybody rolls through that stop sign there at the corner of the parking lot. So we need better treatments to stop people, I see people to almost get hit all the time. So I'm saying is, while you're focusing on this specific issue, and I love that you guys are using the data in this assessment, it's an assessment that's two parts, the police department assessments, and then the residents want a treatment for their street to slow down the traffic. So there are more, what I'm saying is there are more design options out there, we need to expand our palette of design options for these treatments for the slow zones. So this is my official, formal request in front of everybody, rather than trying to do it behind the scenes via email. Okay, thank you. All right, I guess we go on to council. Thank you for the update. All right, we'll start with, you got nothing.
Nothing.
Oh, man. The timer sound, I hate it. Can we turn that off?
Thank you.
And also, I just wanted to acknowledge that the Rain and Barrel Program has come to its conclusion. Claire Dion did a fantastic job administering that program. And I'm kind of interested if we, if it's not too intensive, if we can get some data on where they all landed, it would be nice to confirm that we got them all on the east side with that clay soil, but if that's too much trouble, then ignore me.
Thank you, good night. I have one announcement, please come to my final State of the City tomorrow night at, and volunteer appreciation night at 215 West at 6 o'clock starts the appreciation networking, say hello, and then 7 p.m. starts the speechifying by me, and then I'll close it out, and we'll hang out and have fun, and I will pass the gavel to someone else in the room. So with that, have a good night, everybody. Thanks for hanging with us, it's a longer meeting than normal till 11 o'clock, go home and get some sleep. Meeting's adjourned at 11:06.